Good afternoon. It is now four o'clock. The Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land will now come to order. The requisite notices were published on the legislative website and provided to the media five days ago and also 48 hours ago. We have several bills on the agenda, and so let's start with the one that probably has the most people here. We'll start with Bill 393, which is an act to add a new section 8010-109V to Chapter 280 of Division 4 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated relative to expanding the borrowing authority of the Guam Memorial Hospital for the renovation of the Labor and Delivery Ward. This bill was introduced by the Speaker, Speaker Wampat. Unfortunately, she is en route and won't be back until about 7:00 this evening, but we'll start, and I'll read her statement, sponsor's statement. "Mr. Chairman, thank you for scheduling today's hearing for Bill 39332, an act to expand the borrowing authority of the Guam Memorial Hospital for the renovation of the Labor and Delivery Ward. Several months ago, I proffered an amendment to Bill Number 1, 7S, now Public Law 32-179, that appropriated nearly $900,000 to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority to fund the renovation of the hospital's Labor and Delivery Ward. The Labor and Delivery Ward has not been renovated in 25 years. Despite that fact, there is an average of 10 births a day. There is one Labor and Delivery Room, six Labor Rooms, three Delivery Rooms, and three Beds for Recovery. This means that women are transferred about four times to a tiny Labor Room, a Delivery Room, a Recovery Room, and then to a postpartum room. The plan for renovating the maternity ward will allow expecting mothers to stay in one room, greatly reducing their discomfort and anxiety. Mr. Chairman, the $900,000 that was originally appropriated to the maternity ward is in the hands of GMHA and will help in the startup of the renovations. Additional monies are needed for the renovations, and that is why I introduce Bill 393, which would allow the Guam Memorial Hospital and the Governor to arrange a line of credit, a revolving loan fund, and/or direct loan, the total cumulative amount not to exceed $4 million for a period not to exceed 10 years, with banks or other lending institutions licensed to do business on Guam. I estimate that the government will be paying an annual debt service of $600,000. With the passage of FY 2015 budget, the source of funding will come from the business privilege tax that was pledged to GDOE schools by Public Law 31-229. I must point out that Public Law 32-120 and 32-121, which I auth provides sufficient funding resources to renovate Simon Sanchez High School and the remaining GDOE schools, excluding the leaseback schools. Thus, the BPT, the business privilege tax that was originally pledged in Public Law 31-229 can be redirected to fund the Labor and Delivery Ward. While the legislation does not affect the debt ceiling, as the amount proposed to be borrowed is well below our limit, the bill allows the Governor to reserve the limited borrowing capacity for other priorities of the government of Guam and provide him a means for alternative financing, such as municipal leasing as provided in Chapter 58 of Title 5 Guam Code Annotated. Again, this type of alternative financing does not affect our borrowing capacity. Every effort must be made to complete renovation of the Labor and Delivery Ward. I will work with my colleagues and stakeholders in the community to pass this legislation. I'd like to thank our OB-GYN doctors, nurses, and mothers and their families for their advocacy towards improving our island's maternity care. We are all responsible for the health of our community, especially the health of the most vulnerable members of our population, our babies." That was the statement provided by the Speaker, and I have signed up to testify, Mr. Kendley Anguero, Dr. Johnson Seidel, Ms. June Paris, Dr. Thomas Shea, Barbara Moffness. Let's take, stay with us, five. Let's start, I believe, let's start with you, Doctor, and then we'll get moving down.
Thank you, Vice Speaker, and Honorable Senators who's here today. And I want to thank the Senators who signed on to this particular bill, and it's long overdue, and I know that majority of the Senators are in support of this particular renovation. I've been on Guam for 19 years. I came here with the United States Navy, and I've delivered about 7,000 babies. That's about 350 babies a year, so quite a bit, quite a bit. And right now, we're averaging about 30 babies a month. I've cut back from about 40, 50 babies at one time, so, but if anybody knows about delivering babies, I can certainly attest to that. Now, that's not counting the baby that delivered at Capulani in Honolulu, which is about 4,000. So my career lifetime delivery for babies is about just over 10,000 babies, so that's quite a bit. And I'm not getting any younger either. But the reason I am here today, and also, I want to make sure that the voices of the pregnant women who is behind me may not be able to speak up, and they actually talk to me every day, day in and day out, whenever we're in Labor and Delivery or in my office, et cetera, or even at public health, is that this is way overdue. Now, I will submit my written testimony, but I think it's best if I give you a visual testimony. A visual testimony, some of you may already walked through Labor and Delivery, but just to refresh your memory, and I'll go through a couple of slides, actually quite a bit of slides, but I'll fly through them quickly. So, just real quick, as you go into Guam Memorial Hospital, you're going to go into the second floor, and basically this is what you see on the second floor. And you have nursery, and then you have father's waiting area, and you have Labor and Delivery here, and you have NICU. Basically, as you walk in, they did a nice job in painting here. Father's Room is kind of small, probably is smaller than Senator Roy's office, that's for sure. But you can probably fit maybe six people, six, seven people in there comfortably. On Guam, that's the entire family, that's one family. So we deliver 250 babies a month at GMH, so that's a lot of families trying to fit into that particular room. So as you walk through the first door here, you can see that there's a door here on the right, and basically that door is the triage door. And when you get in there, this is what you see here. Every mother that comes through Labor and Delivery, 250 times, they will sit on this particular table, and that's only counting those moms who deliver. There are moms who come through that don't deliver there, that come through because of preterm labor or false labor. So we estimate about 1,000 people that comes through Labor and Delivery each month, just to be checked. That, I put down, could be a museum piece. The reason why is that this is so old that I have a hard time trying to bend this stirrup up. This is actually very, very, very old. But we work with it, we work with it, because it's a table. And from this point on, mom comes through there, and we move from there, oh, this is the restroom here. This is right next to this table, by the way. This is right here, and that's where that restroom is. You've got to be careful with this restroom, because if you put too much tissue, it's going to flood. That's how bad it is, and it has done it before. So from the triage room, you go into another room. The mom is evaluating the triage room, and they're taken to another room called a Labor Room, and this is one of the Labor Rooms there. This is actually right, two Labor Rooms here. But this is, you have a curtain separating here, you know, that's really not HIPAA compliant, because if I was here talking to a patient, and I'm telling her, oh, you have this particular problem, the next door, this patient hears it, so it really is not a HIPAA compliant type of a room. It is not up to standards, and we really don't like that at all. But anyway, the patient brings to this room and then labor there. They stay there two centimeters, three centimeters, they labor until they're completely dilated. And then at that point in time, when there's so much pain, then they go in. Now, interestingly enough, this is something that I show, you know, all the Senators that came through, and I think Brian McCready had a shock at it, because when you open his door here, you can see that that's a toilet that's underneath here. And it's functional, but I don't think it's that pretty. And it's old, it's very old, and that's unacceptable, in my particular opinion. Now, once you labor, you're complete, you move into a different room now. Now you're going to Deliver Room, and this is the Deliver Room back here. The Deliver is pretty well set up, it's good size, but everything is piecemeal together. It's almost like a Frankenstein room. Nothing is coordinated, and granted, our staff is very good, know exactly where things are, but if you can see all these tapes here, like that, it shouldn't be like that. This is not your regular delivery room. So patients are brought in to the Deliver Room, and they move from one table to another table. I'll show you another table here. But they're completely dilated, and we're telling them, get on this other table here. If you're in severe pain, how are you supposed to move a patient? And I think Val can attest to that, she's a nurse at Labor and Delivery, it's very, very difficult. So that's not the standard. So, first room the patient comes in, now we're letting the patient out this door into the Labor and Delivery Room. Now the pain is about eight or nine right there, right, or 10 probably. They're screaming in pain, now they out the door it goes. Now, interestingly, one of my colleagues yesterday was delivering a patient there, the patient's head of the baby was almost out on that table, and then from that table, we have to take them in, we have to take them in there, I mean, that's really ridiculous. As we're going in, there's another patient going out this way, because she's going to be, after you deliver there, she's got to go to another room. If that's not inhumane, I don't know what is. Okay, this is not how we do delivery. So, this is what I mean. A patient is labor, now we move in the bed, we move the mom onto this room, we deliver the baby, baby is delivered, now the mom goes in this bed here. Now she's supposed to be holding the baby. Imagine trying to transport the mom, holding the baby, and telling her to go to here. The reason I put pain and blood loss here, sometimes patients have what we call postpartum hemorrhage, and that can happen when you're in an at knee. After losing about a pint of blood, and you expect the patient to be well awake and say, come on over and move on to this particular bed. From this bed, we transfer to another room called a Recovery Room, and this is where patients recover after they deliver the baby. And that's movement four times from the time they came into the room. And that's, to me, that's unacceptable. And I've been doing this for 19 years on Guam, and I think it's time that I speak up. And you can call me the whistleblower if you want, but somebody's got to speak up for the women that's out there. So, from the Recovery Room, that's not the end of it. You go from the Recovery Room to postpartum. There's no baby here, because you have to transport the mom onto this bed here, the baby is in nursery. Because if a mom is holding a baby here, if she's lost a lot of blood, you think she's going to hold on to the baby while we're transporting her and moving her into another bed? The risk of dropping the baby is very high. It's a good thing that we put the baby in the nursery, and that's why we do it, for the safety of the patient. So as we go through, then we get into this postpartum ward here, and this is the room that they go in. It's not very big, it's functional. There's no tub, there's no tub. This is the OB ward, and this is the nursing station. It's kind of a non-functional nursing station, because in order for this nurse to know what's going on way down here, she'll have to walk all the way down there. In our renovation plan, the nursing station will be centered where the rooms are surrounding the entire nursing station, so they have direct access to the patients. Now, from there, you can go to the nursery. Now, this is where Dr. Newpan, who's here today, Dr. Newpan is our neonatologist at the Labor and Delivery, and he's in charge of the entire nursery, and he can testify that what needs to happen here. Now, this is our intermediate nursery, and this is where we keep the intermediate babies. I'm not going to go into detail here on Dr. Newpan, he can use my slides if he wants, but I think it's important for us to recognize that we take care of a lot of babies, and we get referrals from Naval Hospital all the time, because they don't have a NICU there, they don't have NICU, they hardly could have intermediate nursery there, so they transfer a lot of their patients over to us. In fact, I'll show you a picture where they transfer twins just, you know, to us for delivery. A lot of patients Naval Hospital can't handle because they're high risk. When they're high risk, they got two options. They transfer them to the community doctors like myself or Dr. Seidel, who's sitting next to me, and they deliver at GMH, because we've got the best staff there. If they can't, if we decide not to accept them, then they have no option but to send them off island. And a lot of the military members are local, they're from Guam, so they're joining military for, they don't want to leave island, they want to stay here to deliver the baby. And we successfully helped them out and keeping them on island, and the baby's done well at GMH. This is the NICU, again, one of the things, this is the major referral center, and this is where miracles happen. This is where we take a two-pound baby, sometimes less than two-pound baby, and it becomes six pounds. This is where our breastfeeding room is, education room. In our renovation plan, we have a totally different concept of education in postpartum for the moms. It's going to encompass a complete renovation of a room for staff, and that can also become a continuing education room for postpartum patients and nurses as well. And this is what Dr. Newpan does best, and this is the baby that we saved day in and day out at Guam Memorial Hospital. This is another baby there. Now, these are the hands, see how tiny these hands are? That's the hands that we kept alive at Guam Memorial Hospital until they're well enough to breed on their own and they're discharged from the hospital. And I can't tell you how many babies we've saved at our hospital. And this is what I'm talking about, that this is a priority. People can say, well, why don't you spend money on some other priorities? It's a bucket full of hoes. This is not full of hoes. This is money well spent. If you invest in the future of Guam, this baby can become somebody important in the future. Okay? And that's just touching the baby. Now, we need your help, we need your help, okay? I'm glad a lot of Senators came over, and some of the Senators probably didn't have to come over because they just had a baby at Guam Memorial, so that's good, too. Now, again, let me just re-vamp here. Moving them on four to five times during labor is really inhumane, that is not our standard of care. Now, the next slide, what I, the concept that I'm trying to create, okay, is something that's important. An LDRP, this is the standard of care that we have across the country, pretty much. Hawaii has it, Saugaw has it. Now, this is a room where we do delivery, labor, delivery, recovery, and postpartum, everything in one room. You've got the baby warmer here, you have the mom here, you've got a family here, and that's the restroom there. This is a family unit. I can't think of anything more important or better investment than to invest in a family unit. To separate the mom, separate the baby from the beginning of birth, that's, to me, that's not a family unit. We've got to start from the very, very beginning. Okay? This is another concept of LDRP. The bidding for the LDRP has already gone out, by the way, and I want to thank the Senators for the C money, that's already gone out to Architecture Bidding Plan. I see Tina Mina Barnes got here, thank you very much for being here. Chairman Rodriguez, good to see you. But I think it's important to kind of feel what I'm talking about here. Here's another concept here. So we're going to see what's best fitting for the structure plan at Guam Memorial Hospital. Here's another one here. Now, this is the nursing station. As you can see, this is, you know, Speaker Wampat, this Senator McCready is back here. He's such a big guy, you put him in that room and nobody else can fit, you know? But the important things I want to show you, this is a non-functional nursing station, non-functional. What I like to see happen is have a nursing station where it surrounds here, where the patient rooms are right in front of them, not to the corners, not to the sides. The nursing station is combined, okay? You have a family room waiting area in the back, again, a nice nursing station there, encompasses rooms and a site, which you can easily access for patients if they need help. And a nursery, very important about this nursery, okay? This little baby can't talk. The mom's in back of me, they're pregnant, the babies can't talk, but I'm talking for them, okay? I want to make sure that this is, this is so important that you listen to this. This is the area that we want to renovate as well, because you can't have an intermediate or any kind of nursery that's have hazard for the babies. We want to update the entire nursery unit, and this is our unit right now. This is the baby who I just delivered two days ago. Actually, I took that back, which is yesterday. And that's the dad outside looking at that area here. And he so much wants to come inside, I tell you. But you can't, because they're restricted because of the space, the way the nursery's built, we can't do that. What we want to do is incorporate, make sure the windows coming all over the area here, so the dad and moms, and even the family unit can actually see the baby as well for intermediate nursery. Now, this is another concept there, this is another concept. Wouldn't need super nice thing, but I think you get my picture. Neonatal intensive unit, very important. This is where baby is so small that can fit in one palm of your hand, become a human being walking out of the hospital with the mom. Not walking out, but, you know, carried out of the hospital. But it's important to recognize that we need to update our NICU. Now, this is my concept of staff education. You cannot allow a patient to walk out of the hospital without providing them some kind of a postpartum education. Every patient that comes through that leaves the hospital, it's got to know how to take care of their baby. It's not just about delivering a baby, but when you get out of the hospital, you've got to know how to take care of the baby, how to feed the baby, how to breastfeed, how to change the diapers, how to make sure, to look for symptoms of the baby that, hey, maybe you should call your pediatrician, or go into the emergency room, or how to care for that baby. And this is the concept here, where we can have education every single day that we don't have right now at Guam Memorial Hospital. There's no facility for such things to happen. A family center, that's what we're looking at for Guam Memorial Hospital. This is the Naval Hospital, they've got a beautiful brand-new hospital, which is great. But you know what? They still refer to us. We still accept their patients. Here's perfect proof, twins referred, because they cannot handle it at their hospital, they don't have a NICU, and they don't have the specialists that we do. And these are the moms that are sitting outside. The next time we walk through this door, I'd like to see this entire area renovated, to bring it up to date, so we can provide better care for our moms and their babies. That baby is a priority, that's the one I delivered here on Guam. And I will end my testimony at that, and I, you know, before I start doing my scans, I want to sit here and see what question you may have for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shea. Dr. Seidel?
For the Honorable Senators, there's a saying in show business, you never want to follow babies or dogs. I think that should extend to following Dr. Shea. I can't hope to match his presentation. Like many of us, I wear different hats. My hat today is representing Guam Memorial Hospital, and I've submitted written testimony from Mr. Verga, who's under the weather, and I would like to put that in the record. The highlights of it is, is that, as Dr. Shea was pointing out, this is a multi-step process where LND would be remodeled first, followed by the maternity ward, and I think followed by the nursery. And so, $4 million isn't going to cover the whole thing, and so GMH is asking you to increase the, amend it to $7 million. But the written testimony is here, I'm going to switch hats and just say, as an OB-GYN on Guam, the OB-GYN community obviously wholly and fully supports Dr. Shea and this project. And that's about all, I won't waste any other time, if you have any questions.
Just, there's a new number now. When Mr. Verga was here on July the 25th, he testified that he needed $2 million for the LND. Dr. Shea has been talking about four. On the radio, Mr. Verga said last week, eight, and now you're saying seven. Dr. Shea last week mentioned to me maybe nine. I feel like we've, though I hate guns, we've shot a gun in a little three-by-four room and tried to see how many walls it's going to bounce off of. What number are we going to put into this bill?
Okay. I have always been consistent, okay? There's three phases of this project. First project, most importantly, is Labor and Delivery. Been consistent, $5 million is going to take in Labor and Delivery. The initial $1 million, $900,000, has already been provided by the good Senators just sitting up here from the Legislature, and that's already bid it out. That's Phase One for Labor and Delivery. And Phase Two for Labor and Delivery is going to cost $4 million, and that's just Labor and Delivery alone. Now, the plan for Phase Three is to encompass postpartum and nursery, and that's entirely, it's going to add another $7 million for that particular project. So the entire Labor and Delivery, postpartum unit, and the nursery and NICU, the entire project is $12 million. But I've always stuck with Labor and Delivery as $5 million, just hasn't changed.
Now we have a new number, 12.
For the encompass of the complete unit. The reason why Labor and Delivery-
Last week I thought you said that was nine.
No. For Labor and Delivery-
Should we wait until we finish with the A and E to see what it's going to come out with? I mean-
Well, we base it on experience-
Otherwise, we're going to be, we're going to be borrowing money that we will be insufficient. How long is it going to get to do, how long will it take for the A and E to get out and Pardon?
Senator, I'm Gordon Mizuzawa, the Associate Administrator of Operations. We're looking at four months for the A and E to be completed.
And would we not be better served if we put off the amount that we're going to appropriate, or are we going to do four now, or is it five now? In four months, we're going to make it, maybe it's going to be 6.5 because of whatever, and then we're not going to be able to start the project because the A and E is showing more than what the appropriation is from here? And then, in a year, or when they finish that, we're going to be doing the other second phase, and then the third phase, until we get to 12, or 14, or 16?
No, let me tell you why. Let me tell you why. I've been a businessperson for a long time here, okay? And I can tell you something about structures. For one thing, you give a limit, you set a cap, okay? You cap it at $12 million, and that's it. And that's the money you work with, and you build it around that, under that cap, and that is it. You write a blank check, that's great, if you want to write a blank check, Vice Speaker-
Nobody wants to write a blank check, Dr. Shea.
Right.
This bill has $4 million in it.
That's right.
If you read it carefully, maximum four.
Right, and we're suggesting that if you want the complete, the $4 million is okay, that'll take your Labor and Delivery. But if you want to complete project for nursery and postpartum, it's going to take more, it's a hospital, it's not a house.
I understand that. I'm just saying, we keep walking in like some cartoon character shooting off with both hands, trying to figure out what's going to be the right number.
Senator, we ask, with all due respect, some mercy, and any of your help would be helpful. Obviously, we come for the complete package, but I think it would be a mistake to think our position is if we can't have it all, we don't want any. We'll be very grateful for the $4 million to start the renovation.
Thank you. Gordon?
To let you know, the A and E includes all three phases. So your recommendation as to observing what they come out with first would probably be more ideal, so we can firm up the numbers, you know? Our estimate, when we were discussing it, both at CIP as well as our committee here, we felt that it'd be up to $12 million. But the three phases here includes the $7 million that Joe Verga is requesting for, and there's a DOI request for FY 2016, which is $4 million that the Governor is placing forward under the FY 16 budget.
Okay.
So it's-
And as we're doing, as we're doing this A and E, I don't want to make the same mistake that we did when we were building schools, where people who weren't involved in schools were making decisions, and we had buildings that had no windows or going outside. Is it possible that, in the A and E that's being drawn up, that we will seek some counsel and advice from the nurses that are there on a minute-by-minute basis?
Yeah. Vice Speaker, if I could interject real quick, that's already, that's already there. We have a committee, I chaired a particular committee. Valerie Mendel is here, she's our head nurse for Labor and Delivery, she's already involved. We've got two other head nurses already sitting on the committee. We've got Dr. Newpan, who is already here, the neonatologist. They're all on the committee for the renovation, so rest assured that within the A and E, that you're going to have windows where it's supposed to be. It's going to be up to standards.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that-
Absolutely.
The nurses are included, because I-
Absolutely.
I know not to upset nurses.
Absolutely.
Now, the committee has been formed, and includes all of the players, from doctors to nurses.
Vice Speaker, may I?
Please.
Thank you. Welcome. I'm really very happy that everybody's made the time to be here. So that you know, we have received, well, I have received email from nurses saying that they're not being included. And so I'm not going to, I don't want to discuss how you engage at your hospital, at our hospital, but I will tell you that there are nurses feeling that they're not being engaged, so if we can go back to that and open those doors, that would help. I also just wanted to clarify, because now I know people are like wondering what was I talking about, because I had always talked about LDRP, and I'd always use the four letters. And to clarify that, we know that in that particular wing, we are going to put in some rooms that are Labor, Delivery, Recovery, Postpartum- rooms that are labor, delivery, recovery, postpartum. So that is going to be addressed in some of that, right? That is the plan, yes.
Yes, absolutely.
So I think that's because, you know, I can hear people saying, but I thought we, and I know that we had, and so, and I also know that we were talking about phasing it in.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
And then to ask you, Senator Yamashita, if you could provide me a name of the nurses who wants to be involved? We're more than happy, in fact, Val yesterday was at the meeting, and I told her, who wants to be involved? Don't ask what the hospital can do for you, but what you can do for the hospital. And I stole that for JFK. But you can complain all you want, but you gotta be proactive. Gotta be proactive. So you can send an email from somebody that says they're not being included, well then stand up and speak up, and then come down to the meetings and get involved. I walk labor and delivery day in and day out. Stop me. Stop Val.
I believe your message has just been transmitted.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leon Guerrero. Did you have a further testimony, Gordon? Okay.
My name's Ken Leon Guerrero, and I'm a member of the community. And 30 years ago, my son was born in Grass Valley, California, a little small community hospital in a community of 38,000. My daughter was born 29 years ago in Wahuah Hospital. And 30 years ago, those facilities are, were much better than what we have here on Guam today. In fact, those facilities 30 years ago looked like his dream picture of what he wants to see. I think I'm in favor of this plan, I think it needs to be done. I have nieces and nephews who are having children even as we speak right now, so I'm hearing the stories, and their experiences are nowhere near what my experiences were. It's a direct result of the breakdown in the system and the facilities. It's long overdue. I think a step in the right direction at this time would go a long way towards strengthening the family ties. Thank you.
Ms. Perez.
My name is June Perez, I'm the Public Information Officer for the Guam Memorial Hospital, and again, Mr. Verga extends his apologies. He left early today, not feeling well, and he basically entrusts the care and the progress of the hospital in your fine hands. I'm speaking as an employee and also as a mother. And so let me get back to my statement. My name is June Perez, I'm the Acting Public Information Officer for the Guam Memorial Hospital, a registered voter of Tamuning, and a proud mother of Tobias, Truman, and Aria. Truman and Aria were both delivered at GMH by Dr. Annie Bernalio. I humbly urge all senators to please vote in favor of Bill 393-32, with the requested amendments from our administration, such that the loan amount be increased from $4 million to a total of $7 million, so that the full renovation of the entire maternal-child areas to include labor and delivery, obstetrics unit, and our nursery units are fully addressed for their renovation needs. And secondly, we ask that GMH is not further burdened with another debt payment it will struggle to meet. The repayment of this funding source must be made by the government of Guam, not GMH. I'm sure you all fully appreciate that concern. We are struggling, as we speak, in making our current vendor obligations. One more payment is not going to help our financial situation. But as Dr. Seidel mentioned earlier, we'll take whatever you can give us. Of course, Guam is where America's Day begins, so it should follow that the Guam Memorial Hospital is where America's life begins. Except for the few babies born at the Guam Naval Hospital and Sagua Manyago, anyone born on Guam since GMH opened its doors in the 1950s was born at GMH, regardless of its ability to pay. With, GMH has always been baby-friendly, with the expertise and compassionate care of specialists such as Dr. Seidel, and Dr. Shea, and Dr. Beeling, our neonatologist, the fine nurses, and clinical staff at GMH. We are the best Guam that have delivered all of Guam's babies. Our maternity and nursery units have continually cared for Guam's moms and babies for decades, and they now need to be renovated and upgraded to meet Guam's increasing birth rate and current hospital standards of care for moms and babies. And that's as far as my prepared statement went, I ran out of time, but the issue, I would like to impress upon you, as a mother that delivered two babies at the Guam Memorial Hospital, is we need the space. We need the space so we can labor and deliver and focus on the work at hand that we have to do in delivering our babies without any interruption, without distractions, without harm, as we are moved from bed to bed to bed to bed in delivering our babies. As Dr. Seidel and Dr. Shea have pointed out, those days are now archaic. The standard of care is to allow the moms and the babies the room, the proper bed, the proper surroundings, so that the beginning of life, the beginning of life is, the babies can present themselves undisrupted, undistracted, and unharmed by the needless movement and relocation of mom and babies. And once the babies are born, they need to be received, they need to have that golden hour, they need to have that skin-to-skin contact, they need to bond with their moms. And as you move the moms and babies from bed to bed to bed to bed, and as they're separated once they're born to the nursery, so the moms are kept in another room so they can recover and be able to be reunited with their babies, hours have passed since, by the time they get together. When I delivered Aria 18 years ago, ladies and gentlemen, this was 18 years ago, I woke up to find myself on the fourth floor, and my daughter was on the second floor. I was horrified that I couldn't even be with my daughter. And so, I made my way down in stitches, exhausted, hormonal, and demanded that I get a room adjacent to where my baby was being kept in the nursery. And eventually, we were united in a room until we were able to go home. But that was 18 years ago. That was 18 years ago. And those obstructions, those, the fragmented care of mom and baby continues today. And my daughter and my son are now old enough to have their own children. I cannot allow that, their experiences to be anywhere near what I have gone through in delivering them. The children and the mothers of Guam deserve the best, and you have already the best doctors and nurses. We just ask for your funding support to allow us the financing, the monies that are needed, so that the facility, the walls can come down, and the mothers and their babies can be born in a room and in a bed, where the bonding of life can be initiated, undisrupted, and the nurturing and the care that these babies and families need can be given in one room with everyone together, with the support and the compassionate care of the nurses and the breastfeeding coaches, and their OB-GYNs, and the neonatologists, everyone together in one room, providing the holistic care that our moms and babies need. So, ladies and gentlemen, again, I would like to thank specifically, we need to recognize Speaker Juan Pat, Speaker Juan Pat, Senators Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Alina Yamashita, Senator B.J. Cruz, Senator Rory Rispicio, Senator Frank Uggan Jr., all of you for the foresight and the support in sponsoring this life-changing bill. And I urge all of you again to please support this visionary measure. It will make an incredible difference to the quality of care that we provide to our moms and our babies, who deserve nothing but the best from all of us. Sisusmasi.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perez. Any senators have any questions on this panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, June, listening to your testimony, my two little ones are also born in GMH. And my first child, Caleb, mom was in preterm labor for about 23 hours, and then inactive labor for one hour. And I was right there the whole time for our first, and also for our second. And I would watch that monitor, that, you know, would kind of give you that advanced warning of when a contraction is coming. And so I did that for 23 hours straight. I would like, you know, warn her, okay, get ready, get ready, you know, all the training that we got under Barb and up at Sagwa. And so, you know, I have a very, you know, the labor and delivery part has a very special place for everybody who's ever had any children at GMH. I very much support the concept, I think the funding, the funding timing is the only thing that I would like to clarify. And that's a question that I have for Dr. Seidel. In the testimony here from Director Verga, he makes very clear as to certain timelines that I wanted to clarify, because according to his written testimony here, he says that the hospital is scheduled to receive and start evaluating the architectural and engineering proposals in September 2014, which is now. He then further states that you anticipate awarding a professional service contract within the first quarter of 2015, which is next year, and you anticipate having completed the A&E by the end of 2015, which is the end of the actual fiscal year. And so if all of these architectural and engineering specs aren't going to be done until the end of 2015, perhaps we can actually, instead of borrowing to pay for this, we can pay for this with the 2016 money that's also identified here in his testimony, that's going to come from the Department of Interior. He states in his second-to-the-last paragraph there, that if this bill does not become law, then FY 2016 DOI capital improvement project funds will be applied to the Phase Two renovations and the required FFNE. And so, that's the $4 million for Phase Two. So if we're going to borrow, go out and borrow now, but the A&E isn't going to be done until projected end of FY 2015, and if the $4 million that we're projecting to borrow now really can't be expended until that's done, and we're going to have that $4 million in actual cash come 2016, maybe instead of borrowing, we can just wait for that money to come in, let the A&E process complete itself, don't borrow, and then when that money comes in, we can pay for it with the cash. And then from there, once that Phase Two is complete, then we can say, okay, you know what, Phase Two is done, now let's go out and borrow. That way, we're not incurring the interest expenses while we're still waiting for the architectural, engineering, designing to get done. And that way too, we can cash the first phase and not have any interest expenses until after that first phase is completed with the cash payment.
Senator San Nicolas, if you're referring to the Department of Interior funding source, we'd like to defer that question to our chief planner, Mr. William Candle, if he can come up and join us, and he can explain the arrangements for those particular funds. William, please.
Senator San Nicolas, my conversation with Mr. Verga is not what is testified in here, and I think he needs to redo it. He's under the weather, obviously, but a couple of things. The architectural design bid has already gone out, it should be secured by this particular month, and within the next three months, we should have the design phase completed before the beginning, or January of 2015. So I don't know why it's put down here as A&E design is going to be end of fiscal year 2015. It should be beginning of 2015, not towards the end of 2015. So I think he made a mistake there, so I want to make sure that's clarified. Because we can't tolerate this type of treatment for women for another year like this. This is ridiculous. I want to make sure that Mr. Verga hears from me after this testimony. Thank you for bringing that up to me.
Good afternoon, senators. My name is William Candle, I'm the chief planner for the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. So thank you, thank you for volunteering me to come on up here and discuss the issue. That is correct, it's the first quarter of the fiscal year, FY 15, is where we intend to award a RFP for professional design services. We hope to, within three to six months thereafter, to be able to complete those designs as soon as possible. So hopefully, in the first half to third quarter of the fiscal year, we may be done. I'm giving ourselves that FY 15, that whole year, to be done, because you just never know what's going to happen with the procurement process. The soonest we can complete those designs, we will. And as a part of those designs is included full cost estimates for all phases. Within the Phases Two and Three, also cost estimates for the, what's called FFNE, fixtures, furnishings, equipment packages, so we're going to know what those are going to cost as well. We put those, our estimates, into the package for FY 16 DOI request. The governor's office invited us, told us that, hey, you have our full support. The governor supports this project, and wanted to commit $4 million of FY 16 DOI CIP funds, specifically for CIP, nothing else, for this project. Of course, we recognize the Phase Two, the LND, to be the highest priority, that would come first. So if we can get this loan money, and I agree with you, the timing of the funding is very important. Again, we want to really expedite the A&E process, not, but we want to do a good job. We really want to do a good job on that A&E. So I think a three-to-four-month A&E phase may be, that may be a little pushing it, you don't want to rush, because we're designing for all three areas. We're going to first focus on the LND designs.
Right, and that should be able to complete it rather quickly.
So our idea is, as we complete the phases within the design phase, A&E comes first, we'll be able to kick that out if the funding is available, the $4 million needs to be available right away, because we don't want to wait till the end of the A&E to then start LND. We can start faster, and we want to do that.
Senator, if I can add, you can't just completely do this in one time. You need a place to deliver. So I think what William is trying to say also is that, we're going to start the design process, LND will be the first priority, that's sectioned off. Once that's done, it goes out. We've got the money, we build that particular area, then we phase in, as Senator Yamashita said, LDRPs. You can't have LDRPs if you still have postpartum ward, but you've got to slowly phase it in, the entire process. And that's how we're going to have to do it. Yeah.
I agree absolutely, Dr. Shea. My thinking is, you know, when it comes to architectural and engineering, it's like saying, okay, we need to build a house, it needs a kitchen, it needs a bedroom, it needs a living room. And we're just going to design the kitchen and start building that, and then we're going to figure out how to design the living room, and then build that, and then figure out how to design the bedroom, and then build that. And what I'm saying is, let's figure out how to design the whole thing first, and then start building one at a time. That way, we're not going to be caught up any kind of surprises like, oh man, I wish we put a door over here, or I wish we had a window over there. You know, if we do the A&E and complete the whole architectural and engineering in one big package, and then we phase in the actual construction of the project, so that, as you said, you know, we're not going to shut down labor and delivery while we're implementing everything. And then as those timelines come into play, I'm just trying to make sure that we're matching the availability of financing, so that we're not borrowing money and then kind of sitting on it, waiting for us to be able to deploy it, and that we're not also going to rush the A&E, so that we're just going to, you know, design LND, and then put the money in there, and then all of a sudden say, oh man, we have all of these, what was it? Senator brought up a very good point in one of our hearings with GITA about cost overruns. You know, when you don't realize that there was a flaw in the design somewhere, and all of a sudden it costs a million dollars more. And we're going to run into that risk even greater if we're going to be implementing the structural part of it without fully completing the architectural, engineering part of it. And that's just my concern on my side. But I do fully support the renovation of the LND and the full gamut of the projects. I think that if we can come up with the right timeline, so that we're not going to be incurring any interest expenses, that's going to be, you know, for naught, and then also deploying capital at a more strategic way, so that we can minimize the cost of the funding, I think would be a good thing. But again, I fully support the project. I think that waiting for a full A&E before we finance anything in terms of going out and borrowing from the local lender, and then also with that $4 million coming in from DOI, maybe all the timelines will fit perfectly where the A&E will finish just in time for that DOI money to come in, so that $4 million will be able to use cash. And then once that $4 million is done, and that project is done maybe two years from now, then we can borrow the remaining seven and go from there. And even by that time, two years from now, we do have a lot of other debt services that are going to be retiring, and so it'll all fit perfectly with our government's need to be able to finance the project, and our ability to have the cash flow in the government of Guam, and able to manage the project, you know, on a cash-to-project basis. So that's just where I'm looking at the whole thing. But I thank you very much-
Thank you for that.
Senator, with all due respect, one is-
Senator, with all due respect, one, i- is the word is request, and that's far different than guaranteed. I request a lot in my life, very few things actually are guaranteed. So, so that four million is no more assured than you passing this bill today. And just conceptually, although all three of these units deal with moms and babies and females, they are distinct units, um, and there is nothing technically difficult to plan three separate, um, rooms or three separate, um, wards. They simply, one does not depend on the other. And so you could easily take this money i- if we as a community felt like the nursery was the most important thing. We, we don't, but if it was, we could design the nursery and not have it any impact on the L and D. So I, I, I think it's somewhat, uh, let me just clear that up. Yes, they all do, they all deal with mothers and babies, but each unit is a distinct unit. And so I don't think that, uh, until we know the exact way everything's gonna look and the exact funding source, my fear, maybe, maybe I'm a pessimist, but we're gonna be back here in year 2016 having this exact conversation. Then in 2018, we'll have this conversation, and then 2020, when one after I'm dead and retired, we still will have the same L and D that we have now. So I, I think, um, I guess I've made my point, but that, that's kinda how I feel.
And what I'd like to do is, at some point, I will leave this record open. I'd like for the five, four of you to meet at the hospital with your administrator and amend your statement. She wants seven, you want twelve, he doesn't want anything right now. Get one statement in.
Thank you, Speaker. The, the statement does say twelve in here. But, um, anyway, a couple, a couple of things I really wanna emphasize too is that when you mentioned about, you gotta have windows here, make sure the appropriate people are involved, and, uh, we are involved. We are involved. You're talking to the, the two experts here. We know what we're doing as far as developing an L D R P goes. I trained at Capilani Hospital. I've done my training also at Naval Hospital here. I know how to run an L D R P room, okay? You're not gonna get a better expert than myself running this and chairing this particular project. I assure you that at the end of this project is done, you're gonna be proud that we're Guam Memorial. That is our hospital. That's the people's hospital. It's not a private hospital. It's not a private Sagwa. It's not a private Naval Hospital. We have to take everybody in, so we gotta expedite this. I don't think it's gonna take more than three months for the A and E to complete. I will assure you of that because I'm chairing the particular project, okay? If I can do a bone marrow drive, get four thousand people out in a weekend, we can certainly get this accomplished in three months. Senator San Nicolas.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shea.
Thank you.
Next panel.
Senator Cruz, if I may please, I, I just wanna be clear on the numbers that, that you seem to, to be unsettled with. The total, the total estimate for the entire labor and delivery, obstetrics, and nursery renovations is twelve million. We're not asking for twelve million.
What did you ask for in your testimony?
The administration's statement.
What did you ask for in your testimony?
We asked for seven.
Thank you.
We asked for seven.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Before you dismiss the panel, I'd like to thank all of you for your participation this afternoon, but specifically, I wanna thank Dr. Shea for providing the free, uh, four D ultrasounds. You're in my office again today. You were, this is the fourth time you're here. You were at the Speaker's office and the Vice Speaker's office.
Yes, and I need to get going because the moms are waiting for me in the back.
Yes, you're doing your my.
I sort of, my, my feet are anxious here because I need to get to them, you know, the patients.
And that's why all the moms are here as well, but I wanna thank you, Dr. Shea, for providing that, uh, public service.
Yeah. And if I, if I can just bring one particular subject up, that's, uh, and then Senator Aileen Yamashita, you had mentioned that, uh, some nurse emailed you, uh, before about not being involved. And I got a text right now from Barbara Moffna, who's sitting back there, I think, or she left. Well, Barbara Moffna texts me, I want to be involved. We need a lactation department, a room for a milk bank. So I assume she's the person that emailed you. But I just wanted to say something. Barbara doesn't walk the halls of the hospital. We walk the halls of the hospital. Valerie's the head nurse, who's sitting here, walks the hall of the hospital. The nursery nurse is here. Barbara Moffna, who's a nurse that works at Sagwa, who is outside of the hospital. I don't see her day in and day out. So I wanna make sure if those nurses who want to be proactive, wants to be involved, my number is in the phone book. Call, pick up the phone, be proactive, and let's get involved. This is a project that we, everybody's gotta be on board. We can't just be arguing back and forth and play politics here and there. The reason I presented this to you.
Nobody's playing politics, Dr. Shea. I'm just trying to get the hospital to be on one page.
I understand, and I already told you, I'm gonna talk to Mr. Verga. He's under the weather. When somebody's sick, they may everything clearly.
Then, then go, go talk to him.
I will, but I just wanna make sure I address Senator Yamashita's concern that some nurse emailed her that says they wanna be involved and now getting them to involve. That's, that's not, that's inappropriate in a, in a testimony like this to mention that, when someone texts us being saying they wanna be involved.
We'll, we'll deal with that.
All right.
I just need to deal with this. Thank you. Ms. Moffna, Ms. Melna, Ms. Meno, Dr. Beeling, and Ben Numpang.
Mr. Nupeng, Ms. Meno, Ms. Melna, and Ms. Moffna. Okay, thank you. Uh, just introduce yourself and provide your testimony, please. Make sure the red light's on.
Good afternoon. My name is Valerie Menno. I am the unit supervisor at the Labor and Delivery Unit at the hospital, G M H. Um, I, uh, first and foremost, um, to address Senator's concern about the nurses, um, for my unit, we have been constantly involved. Dr. Shea, um, Dr. Seidel, the whole administration has, from the very beginning, invited us to every meeting, and we have attended. If I can't attend, one of my staff attends, so, and I am constantly, constantly emailing my staff, so they all are aware. And Dr. Shea constantly makes rounds, and he also talks about, um, the plans. So, I mean, you can even ask my staff, my name is Val Menno, but they tease me Val Memo because I am constantly, constantly telling them what's happening, okay? For the other concerns, um, as far as the moms transferring bed to bed, yes, we do do that, and unfortunately, we have to do it because of the, um, the space limitations. So, um, I've, but for us nurses, I mean, for anyone who has ever seen a woman delivering, moms are strong. They can move, they think they can't do it, they're yelling, they can't, they can't, but with a little encouragement, they can do it. And when they move onto that small delivery bed, um, they're yelling, saying they can't, they can't, but the minute their baby comes out, they look at their baby, they start crying, and they just start saying, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was yelling, but I don't know about you guys, but for me, that is like the best feeling when I can see that and witness that. It's what made me become a nurse. So, um, and yes, they do yell because they have to transfer, they have to transfer again, and unfortunately, that's just how it is, and they deal with it, we deal with it, um, which is why I think Dr. Shea and everyone else is really trying to push for the renovation, and we are just very grateful that we have, um, O B doctors who are willing to put themselves out there and really push for the renovation. Other than that, um, that's, that's all the concerns, but otherwise, we all support it, everyone at Labor and Delivery, everyone at the nursery, and everyone at the pediatrics area.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your service to the community. I mean, thank you very much for your service to the community.
Thank you.
My name is Ben Numpang. I'm the aneurithologist at Guam Memorial Hospital. Um, good afternoon, everyone. So I'm here to speak on behalf of nursery. I take care of the babies that get born premature, babies that go, born sick. I get the sense that there's not really an argument as to whether the L D R, as well as the nursery, as well as the postpartum unit needs renovation. I think the questions about the money and stuff like that, I cannot comment on because I'm, I just take care of the babies. That's, I guess the only thing I can sort of really impress and add to the conversation today is just how important a nursery unit is here on Guam. I take calls from Naval Hospital, and I actually take babies, about a baby every one to two months. They have, we have about two hundred babies that deliver a month. About ten percent of those would end up under my care. Same thing for babies of, at their born Naval Hospital, they probably get about a hundred to two hundred babies a year, and about ten to twenty of the babies, all those babies would end up under my care. So at G M H, we're basically the referral center for the service people that work over there. I've also taken transfers from Saipan. We do have a surgeon, and if they can get avoided, they try not to transfer babies over long distances. We don't have all the services available, but we have some, so we're glad to be able to provide that service, and whatever funds they can provide to us would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for not recognizing you as a doctor, and, uh, I guess you're the miracle worker that everybody talks about. Your signature is so, so clear that it couldn't have been a doctor, I didn't think.
Um, yes, and I would like to also just, this is completely unrelated. I think about a year ago when I was being hired, uh, two years ago when I was being hired, there was some concerns about the hiring process, but you guys stepped up and made it happen, and I would like to thank you guys for that.
No, we thank you for being willing to come and serve on Guam, and, uh, we appreciate it. Any members of the committee have any?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Thank you both for, for stepping up and for speaking. Um, thank you, uh, I watched you twice, um, and I saw you with your babies, and I, I really thank you for being here on Guam with us, and I do hope you extend your contract, and I hope that we're able to give you more warming lamps to make your job a little bit easier, to take care of, of our most fragile. But God bless you, and God bless you for the work that you do. Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? If not, thank you again, and thank you both for your service to our children. I think I've exhausted all those appearing on, for three ninety-three. I think the next largest group that's here is, I imagine, for Mr. Blas, or has he left? Who's testifying for? All right, uh, we, we'll have you after we finish. Senator Lamarena, Senator Bomba, and Senator Leon Guerrero. Senator Bomba, come up, please. Senator Carlotta Leon Guerrero. Senator Leon Guerrero, come on up. Senator Brown, no need to sign in, just come up. Grabber Chair. All right, let's start with Senator Leon Guerrero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Senators. It's a great honor to be here, to stand in support of Senator Tony Blas. I think that in all of the years of working with him and working with many of you here as well as with many of the, um, top financial people within the government, there's an understanding that there's some people that are essential because of their years of experience and their understanding of the flow of government finances, and Senator Blas has that ability. And I, I come from a perspective of being in the legislature as well as having spent some time in the executive branch. So I was able to work with him on finding the funds, uh, having creative ideas and solutions. Uh, George is here, Art's here. We were all part of this fiscal team that contained Tony Blas. So I stand in support of his abilities, um, his grasp of government budgets, and I think continuity, and I think, um, these longtime, uh, understandings of government budgets is, is very important, and I stand in support of him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I also am here to testify in favor of Tony Blas' appointment, uh, to B B M R. I have worked with Tony, originally started working with Tony about twenty-six years ago, and I was assigned the task of being in charge as the Legislative Review Committee, and he was probably the one director that I had the challenge of keeping up with. Uh, because if anyone knows Tony Blas, you know how active he can be and sometimes how energetic he can be, and the challenge is always trying to keep up with him. Uh, certainly, Tony went on to take over PU A G at the time. Uh, he's continued on his work in government over many years, certainly at G I D A also. He's very well-rounded, he's knowledgeable. I mean, he's done the implementation of budgets, he's been in charge of the very committee that you sit on that oversees budgets for the entire government of Guam. So in terms of the expertise that he brings, um, there's not too many people that have all those capabilities in the government right now, and so we're very supportive of his initiative and his desire to certainly wanna continue to work. It's a challenging position because anyone who has to deal with budgets, generate budgets, approve budgets, knowing that, um, the demands are greater sometimes and what the finances are, and then trying to balance that, and then trying to take care of all the immense needs that are out there, and all the things that we would all love to see as a priority, it's a pretty tough job, and the fact that he's willing to come forth, um, not just to be nominated, but to say, yes, I'm willing to take that challenge, and I, I'm willing to continue to serve the people of Guam, is very admirable, and certainly those of I, of us that are here that have worked with Tony over the years, um, we're very supportive of him. We know he's quite capable of doing the tasks that has been put before him, so I'm certainly here, along with my former colleagues, I think it's the first time we sort of all hung out in the old session hall, probably in a good fourteen, fourteen-plus years, um, to be here to support him today. So, um, I certainly stand in support of his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Lamarena?
How are you? [laughing]. Well, you wanted me to turn for that.
Go ahead, whoever.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Vice Speaker. First of all, I've known Tony for, uh, actually, our relationship goes all the way back to his father. I worked for his father while we, while he worked, uh, we were in the, uh, first book of administration, um, and, uh, when Tony was going to University of Notre Dame, and every time he'd come back, he'd, of course, was very expressive, very strong interest in, um, the activities of the, uh, of the executive branch, and, and of course, his background is in finance. And, um, when he graduated and was, um, and I had asked him, I said, no, you, you should consider going into public service because this is a, you know, you've gone abroad, got your education, got a great education, and we need leaders that are, have that capacity. And, uh, of course, that's one decision to support him and his endeavors that I will never regret, because, uh, since then, we've not only, uh, served together in the legislature, but also, uh, was a key part of the fiscal committee, uh, of that, that time during the previous administration, uh, of which I was chairman of, and, um, Tony, as well as Art, and John, uh, Camacho, and, uh, Lou Perez and Bertha, uh, were very essential in crafting and working with, uh, legislature in, in trying to, in reaching a consensus on, on a lot of challenges that we had faced. And I think if it wasn't for the, uh, support that, of course, the legislature had given us at the time, under the late, uh, even with the late Senator Ben Pangolin, he was, he was, you know, he was very candid, he was very, and, you know, we were very open, and we wanted to be as, to reach as much of a consensus as possible. And Tony was critical in, in the subsequent bond issues that were floated, which took care of the landfill, the COLA, as well as, I believe, EITC, and, I think some of the refunds. But anyway, you know, he, he was essential in that part. He was, his agency was critical to developing a strategy to not only get our ratings, higher ratings for our bonds, but also putting on a, what we would call a roadshow, to get investors interested. And as a result of that, and as I was telling the late Senator Ben, I said, you know, I said, we were blessed that day. We spent something like a week in New York in the dead of cold, and in less than half an hour, a total of $460 million that this legislature authorized to be floated was sold. And at that point, the window closed. New York couldn't even sell their bonds, California couldn't, Puerto Rico couldn't. So, you know, I think it was due in large part to the preparation that occurred, and the, and the determination that we all had, and especially Tony, in seeing this thing through. So, for that, you know, I, I do hope, I sincerely hope, that this legislature does confirm him as Director. I think he's entirely deserving of it, and I think he's, he's extremely capable of performing the job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Lamarena?
Thank you, Vice Speaker, Senators. I'm here, I'm Tony Lamarena, here in support of Tony Blas, Senator Tony Blas. I've known Tony for almost 30 years. I'm dating myself, I was, what, 12 when I knew him? But Tony brings with him a wealth of knowledge. He's, he's served in various capacities within the government of Guam. First time I met Tony was Director of PUAG back then, and moved to the legislature, and has now served in various capacities and with the government of Guam. And what you need with someone in BBMR is someone who does, in fact, have that institutional knowledge, who knows how government functions, who understands government finance. And I'm proud to sit here and, and support and endorse my good friend and colleague, Senator Tony Blas.
Thank you very much, Senator. Art?
Thank you, Senators. My name is Artemio Loggins. I am, I've known Tony since high school. I was an outgoing, I was an outgoing senior, and he was an incoming freshman. So, of course, we abused him. We initiated him into Father Duñez at that time. I've known Tony, Tony, when I first kind of like got to know Tony, kind of came up to me and he said, you know, I know your parents and your grandparents and your great-grandparents. Wow, this guy, he studies genealogy. So, I, I think he knows probably almost all your grandparents and stuff. So, I kind of respected Tony for that. As a professional, I knew Tony. He worked for Pete Mark Mitchell, John Bond, Senator, he was a Senator, he was a Director for PUAG. And then, I really got to know Tony through when he was Administrator for GITA. He really did a lot. Our ratings started to increase, we got bonds, we got money to help the government. But I mostly know Tony for his faith, his belief in God. And I know Tony, his upbringing with his parents, making the Lord's Day Sunday, every Sunday. I see him at Mass, talk about God, especially in hard times. And, and that's why I am close to Tony. And that's why I'm here to, to ask for your support in confirming Tony. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loggins. Any questions of this panel?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. I just, I thank each of you for all that you've done, and then for you to continue to really care. You still are very active, and your leadership speaks for itself. And for you to come and speak on behalf of another leader, for me, is really one of the things that Guam is really good about. We continue to care for one another, and we continue, it matters to us who's in place. It really matters. So, I thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, and Senators, thank you. Mr. Loggins, thank you very much for your testimony. Do we have any more people signed up? This room's full, I'm sure some of them.
For the other bills?
For the office.
Oh, okay. Oh, Mr. Pangolinen, you had your testimony. Anybody else?
You need the red light. My name is John Pangolinen, and I'm here to, in support of Tony Blas. And the only thing I'm going to say is that, when I see Tony does his work, completes his work, finishes work, he makes me tired, because he does it real fast and correctly. And what I'm trying to say is that Tony's goal-oriented, he's mission-related, and he can please his mission. I've known Tony for 30 years. I know often, but I just recently know often in the last couple of years. He's a worker, and he cares for people. And I wouldn't be here because, if it wasn't for his attributes, and not only in the experience, but his caring of, of his staff. So, I'm in here in support of Tony Blas, and I hope he gets this directorship, because he, he can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pangolinen. And we did receive your written testimony, it'll be included in the record. And if you young ladies will introduce yourselves, and...
My name is, my name is Kimberly Blas, and I am Tony Blas' eldest daughter. This is my sister, Maria Blas, second eldest, and that is the youngest Tina Blas. And all I have to say is that my dad is a hard worker. He's the smartest man I know, and he really believes in Guam and anything to help Guam. So, if this job, even if it's the Director of BBMR, or if it's being a Senator, or if it's working on a radio station, he does the best at everything he does. So, that's all I have to say.
Don't confuse them.
We're not used to this. Okay, thank you.
I just want to say that my dad has shown us the best guidance by facing every challenge that has come our way. And I think that shows his character, and that speaks for himself. And I think he's, he'll be the best person for anything, really, and especially this.
Thank you. I'm not that scary. Tina?
Hi, my name is Tina. I'm his youngest daughter. Yeah, like my sister said, we faced a lot of challenges growing up, and I believe that my dad, as a single parent raising us all alone, he has proven the morals and values, and he has instilled the best he could in all of us. Sorry, I'm really nervous. And I've never met anyone like him. He, he forces us, not forces anymore, but we are now, we now go to church on our own, and, you know, he, he has raised us to love each other, love our family, love the people around us, no matter how bad they wrong us. And I think that his hard work and dedication has shown me to do the same in my everyday life, and I wouldn't be where I am today if it wasn't for him.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. I'm Kimmy. I want you to know that you have a real good dad. And yesterday, when he called me, I told him I'll support him because of you. You know, so, but, but really, he's, he's a good, he's a good man, and so, he has my full support. And thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You're excused. Mr. Blas?
Howdy, my name is Sios Pamzitolom, and I got, you know, honorable Chair, Vice Speaker, and Senator Tommy Morrison, my former Senator Tina Winnebourns, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, my good friend, I sent a very special, my longtime colleague, Senator Tom Ada, Senator, Senator Mike Sinek, Senator Ben McCrady, and Senator Lina Machita. Donkles Jesus Massey, my mother's a POGO, by sitting here hearing. I wish to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to appear before you today, to speak to my nomination to serve as the Director of BBMR. I also want to thank Governor Eddie Posocaval for nominating for this position. The consideration of my nomination for this position comes at a time when, that our budget has been signed into law. And as we move forward in fulfilling the mandates and promises to our people, I need to thank you, Vice Speaker Sajid Bija Cruz, and the members of the Republicans and Democrats who have come together for this bipartisan collaborative relationship that you all have displayed, in working with the administration in order to deliver a budget that takes care of the major priorities, such as health, education, and public safety. And of course, BBMR is currently working on all the stakeholders, preparing for the execution phase for our budget beginning on October 1st. And this fiscal 2015 budget is the fourth balanced budget that, that has assisted us in providing the needs for our people. And, Vice Speaker and the Senators, with your assistance, we have a budget that will pay, not, not only for education, health, and public safety, but also for the take care of our debt service payments, tax refunds, the universal pre-K program, meals for the Manamco, additional COLA for our retirees, and also the assistance for government charges, and retro pay for our government employees, our hard-working government employees, for the general pay plan, and the overdue payment plan for our law enforcement personnel. This, we're grateful, the passage of our, of our budget is a great accomplishment for all of us. And I believe I'm qualified to lead BBMR in this next phase of the budget process and fulfilling its mission of providing budgetary, financial, technical, and management assistance to the various departments and agencies, and also guidance for the government for the policy development issues. These are, I think, I'll make it quick, I guess, this is kind of a, a thing I want to talk about. Mr. Vice Speaker and members of the legislature, with this duties and responsibilities entrusted to, for this to be Director of BBMR, I, to tell you, I've confidence in my qualifications and experience to continue to the positive efforts produced by the agency. I have almost 30 years of supervisory experience earned through the public and private sectors. A part of my current position as the Acting Director of BBMR, I served as the Deputy Director of Department Administration, the Administrator of Guam Economic Development Authority. Of course, I was, I was the former Chief Officer of PUAG, who served the people of Guam, and as a five-term Senator. I worked with, of course, obviously, Senator Tom Ada was my colleague, and, and guess, we're this, we're the subsequent to my, 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 being a member of the legislature. I also served as the Chairman of Finance and Tax Secession in, in the 24th Guam Legislature, and also chaired the Ways and Means Committee in the 25th Guam Legislature. So, the budget, we did, we managed the budget during my time when I was a member of the legislature, and I worked with the Chief Justice when she, when you were in the Supreme Court. I, I also have a bachelor's degree in, in Management and Accounting at the University of Notre Dame, and indebted to my master's degree for the University of Guam in Public Administration. And I also currently, I was selected, currently serving as elected member of the GovGuam Retirement Board of Trustees, and also I'm an adjunct professor at the University of Guam for Public Finance as well. Before concluding my prepared statement, I want to thank the hard-working personnel at BBMR, of course, DOA, DRT, and also GITA, and working with the Deputy Director Joey Calvo, our Budget Analyst, and the administrative staff at BBMR. We also have a limited number of staff that assist in the budgetary needs of all the line departments and agencies, and some autonomous agencies in various capacities. I wish to convey that they all have done an outstanding job. These people are behind the scenes that have helped us to get where we are today, by helping to restructure GovGuam's debt, by carefully monitoring and reviewing planned expenditures through cost reduction and containment, and by adopting a revenue project model that has assisted us in properly planning for budgets. They've all been steadfast in carrying out the missions and duties of the office, of which I'm truly proud. I also wish to thank all the hard-working employees for the other agencies, DOA, GITA, and of course, DRT. This is so important. From my personal perspective, I am a very proud parent for my three daughters and my son, Abukin, Kimberly Anne, Marina Cole, and Christina Bian. I want to thank them for being here today. They didn't have to do this and an ass to come here today, but I'm very grateful that the good Lord has given me four wonderful and beautiful children. I've gone through many ups and downs in my, in my life, but that's, that's the way of the world. These are challenges in everybody's lives, and I, every time I wake up every day, these, these kids of mine, they continue to give, have the strength to wake up every day and do my public service responsibilities, and also take care of my kids as well. I want to honor my father, because he is here today, Abukin Blasa, and I want to thank him for being here today, my siblings, and all my, my friends and supporters are here today to support my, my nomination. Mr. Chairman, and Hamzalukim and Senator Dossia, Donkles Jesus Massey, for giving me this opportunity to speak to you, to speak, to work with you. I've been working with you for many years, and I'm sure we can have, we love, we want the collaborative relationship. We all want that. We can agree to disagree, that's, that's the way of the world, but, but I think in the end, the whole mission for all of us is to help our people, the people of Guam. Donkles Jesus Massey.
Thank you very much. In all the positions that you've had, and you'll probably be, there should be a letter going to the governor either today or tomorrow, from me. Did you serve on the governor's Program-Based Budgeting Committee? He established it by executive order about two years ago, and I'm just wondering how much...
Performance-based management system, yes. Also, I want to remind you, Vice Speaker, I was the Chairman of Ways and Means, and, and we worked together in the performance-based management. We worked with DOI at that time, and so, that was, we did, we did some, some examples of trying to proceed on performance-based management, and we're committed to do that as well at BBMR.
Which is the reason why I brought it up, and I'm glad that you're here today, because the letter that's going to the governor and CC'd to you is to suggest that in the coming months, now that we've signed the budget, that we start planning the next budget, and select a few government agencies. My suggestion would be two or three of the agencies with over 200 employees, two or three with employees over 100, I mean, over 50, and two or three of the agencies under 50, and require that those nine agencies start the evolution towards program-based budgeting by having that done by the time you submit the budget at the end of this calendar year.
You've given us a new challenge.
Yes, purposely.
I want to do that. We, of course, we're bringing on, we'll do our part. And I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, because I really do think it's important. I mean, we worked on the budget this last time, but it just, there were just numbers, without being able to say, this program really needs to be saved, this one can go. And so, I'm... And so I'm, the letter should be arriving in the next day, but I thought I'd premier it today with asking you.
Thank you.
I know that you, you supported it in the past, and so I'm hoping that as a new confirmed Director, that you will push it--
Make it happen.
--in the future and make it happen. Not just a DOI pipe dream, but actually something that we can all be proud of.
That's a movement for improvement, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other, anybody have any other questions? Go ahead, Senator Morrison, oh, Senator Blas, Winia Barnes, and then--
Good afternoon, Senator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first off want to thank all those who came before you and testified in support of you. And I'm going to miss you at DOI, and I want to thank you for recognizing the efforts that we put into the Office of Technology and, and understanding and assuming, or seeing that it's assumed a lot of responsibilities going forward, and your belief in the office that would eventually transform this government and its customer service, and I thank you for that. I want to also acknowledge your efforts. I've watched you throughout the past, working in the fiscal team, and seeing how instrumental you have been in contributing to that wonderful team that has done great things for the island and working with the legislature. So you thank, I thank you for your, your public service for many, many years. I thank you for your family for being, for being here, and yeah, my full support, Senator. Thank you.
Jesus Massey, Senator Tommy, thank you so much.
Jesus Massey, Mr. Vice Speaker, and to Senator Tony, thank you for acknowledging our relationship and disclosing that for the record, but I do just want to say, thank you for truly believing and working together, and even noting that sometimes we can agree to disagree, but the bigger picture is what's best for the island of Guam. And if there's anything that you touch near and dear to my heart is believing that anything and everything is possible with God, and having your beautiful children here to come up and testify on your behalf, and seeing Uncle Ken back there, I just want to say thank you. You've got a lot of support here, you've been in government service for a long, long time, over three decades, and I just know that, that the work that you will continue to provide for the government will be for the best for the island. So thank you for being a part of that, stepping up to the challenge, and working with all the different financial agencies, DRT, DOI, BBMR, and of course, DOI, and working closely with them. I'm just going to say, thank you, you've got my support. I noted that to you when you called me personally, and I just want to thank the family for being here. Senator Massey.
Donkles Jesus Massey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I also want to say for the record that you have my full support. Senator Lamarena said something that reminded me of something that's very characteristic of you, and I want to take the opportunity to thank you for always honoring the memory of my grandmother, Tendec Rivera Respejo. To this very day, you always tell me what a beautiful woman she is. You remind me--
I'm a Carrotte.
You remind me, yeah, and you remind me that she's, she was the matriarch of the Republican Party of Guam. You indirectly ask me, why am I Democrat, right?
I'm the guy who--
But you know, I, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy certainly to vote for you, and I want to recognize you for all your years of public service, and having that strong family unit is something that gets people like us in our position to, like you said, wake up every day and want to do the best job that we can. So thank you for accepting the appointment, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you so much, Senator. Donkles Jesus Massey, thank you so much. Senator Tom.
Tony, I first met you when we were back in Indiana. That was about 40 years ago.
Indiana, Indiana, your kids were there, I remember that.
That's right. And also had the opportunity to serve with you in the legislature. And, you know, I mean, I've seen you work, but I think for today, probably the best compliment that any father can have is when his daughters step up to the plate and say, my dad's the best. So with that, I'm going to go on that, and I'm definitely going to support your nomination.
Thank you, Senator Tom, thank you, Senator.
Never mind the three senators.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It always seems to amaze me that the best comments come from the people who are not trying to get elected. And no, with all due respect, it's so raw, there's no script, and it's so true, and it's so from the heart. And so, you know, to me, commitment is something you do when nobody's watching you. And, and I know you talked about the budget, and we all get the credit for the budget, but you were one of those guys that were behind the scenes, and nobody knew that. And so, so I thank you for that. And maybe they just found that out now, that you were, you were behind the scenes, but, but still, it was a budget that was a one and done, and we balanced the budget for the fourth consecutive time. And I know in the last budget process, we had seven vetoes, and this time, with, with your help and our collaboration, we finished it the first shot. So I thank you for that. This is a no-brainer. I think this is a 15 to 0 yes vote for you, or 14 to 0. And I really appreciate your public service, and I thank you for your public service, and I look forward to working with you at least for the next couple of months. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you, Senator.
And for my good friend Rory Respejo, it's never too late to cross the river, my friend.
Even better, it's the crossover support that I get after the primary that gets me through the river.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator, it's always been a pleasure working with you. It is no surprise to me that your girls are here. I think it is such an honor to have them speak on your behalf. What they said was such a true testament to your success as a family, and to have your dad in the room is also very, very wonderful, very, very wonderful, and I hope you feel really good about that. I know your challenges, and I appreciate your courage. I truly appreciate your courage. You get it, you walk in the shoes, you know what concerns the families of this island, you know the struggles of the agencies, and you know how to pull it together. And so I think you're the perfect person to help us all work together. You answer phone calls, you answer text messages, you open your door, and you help me understand how come or why not. And I would like to echo the Vice Speaker's issue or challenge about performance-based. And I would ask that you really include Department of Education in this initiative. They already have performance standards for our teachers that are board-adopted, there's already a process for professional development and how to hold them accountable, and that is our biggest agency. And we haven't been holding them accountable, and this last budget process, it really showed to me, Senator, how we give out this money, but we don't see the true outcomes or how it's being realized, what it's going toward. And so those deliverables and those outcomes really need to be in front of us, and a huge part of our budget, we all know, is people. It's the human capital. And then until we hold everybody accountable and give them opportunity to get better, we are not investing as best as we can. And then what happens is all the smartness that you all do on bond markets and, you know, investments and finances, we don't use that as well as we can. And so for me is, where does this input go, and what do we deliver? And I would really like to see us start with DOI. I know some might think that's just too huge, but I don't think so at all. And understanding that that is our biggest investment, and our, maybe our most important investment, although I would say, School of Education is really way up there, because they prepare the teachers. I would say that we would see a wiser deliverable. This is what we gave, and this is what we got in return. And that's why this is a wise investment, and that's why this needs more money, because they weren't able, then this is why. And we would really be able to understand that better. The outputs just really aren't there, and how are the people being helped to get there? The whole professional development key. You've got some good people at DOI who already got this and know it, but it's not, it's not on the table, and I think it needs to be. Else, we will continue to give them, Senator, hundreds of millions of dollars, and when they're not being held accountable. And that's my personal opinion, and that's my professional opinion. That's not a popular opinion, and politically right now, I probably shouldn't even be talking like this, but this is a serious conversation. Your confirmation process is a very serious process, and you being in this position is going to help all of us understand where the investments need to be, if we're really going to be serious about doing what's right for our island. So I thank you for wanting to do this, I thank you for your energy, I thank you for your attitude, I really do. When I see you coming down the hallway wherever it is, I never turn the other way. We all do that, we all do that, we see certain people, we just go the other way, because we don't always have the energy. But when I see you, you know, like, my heart smiles, and I go up to you, and we greet each other, and it doesn't have to be a long interaction. So a lot of times, it's just that short spurt of energy, it's like, it's a good day, you know? It's a good day, and Guam is good. Guam is good. Guam can be better, but right now Guam is good, and I think with you as a Director in this agency, it's in good hands. So thank you for being willing to serve, and thank you for being here. Thank you very much.
Jesus Massey, Senator, I'll do my part, I'll work with the Vice Speaker, the Chairman, on that whole issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator, the challenge, you're always of being last, I know you've been through this before, is, is everybody's said everything, but I ran out of a meeting to get here because of my commitment to support you and to show my public support for you. I don't have to go over all the conversations that we've had in the last several weeks, several months, and years, but especially in the last several weeks, as you worked up to this confirmation. I also see a lot of the wonderful staff here, present to support you, and I know that means a lot to you, but it means a lot to me as well. It means that they're, they're supportive of you being at the head of the ship and the captain now, and I think that, I know that you're going to do a fine job, so I just wanted to stand to my commitment, and I look forward to voting in the affirmative on your confirmation, Senator. And one last thing before I close, you know, we all, we've all had challenges in our life, and I'm not going to go over that. One thing that has always impressed me about you is your resiliency. You know, you have never let anybody hold you down, put you down, and that is a true testament of your character, and it's the reason why I have no problem supporting you, because I've had my challenges in life as well. And, and, and I'll tell you what, you know, you're a testament to being tough, to taking on the challenges and moving forward, and that's why you're qualified, and more than qualified, for this job, and you got my support, Senator.
Thank you, Senator, I'm very humbled by all those comments, I'm very, very humbled. Donkles Jesus Massey.
Thank you very much. Were there any other people that signed up? No? And you had all these people in here? I told you, you didn't need to bring all these people. Okay, thank you, and Mr. Blas, thank you very much for honoring us today. I meant him, not you. Okay, okay. Oh. Okay. I see a number of Realtors here, I'm sure it's those first two bills.
Don't shoot, don't shoot the, don't shoot the messenger.
All right, Senator Ada has, Tony Ada, not Tom, introduced two bills, and unfortunately had to run to perform a wedding, but the messenger, Senator McCready, has agreed to read his sponsor statement before any of you testify, so--
He's agreed to take the shots.
Don't shoot, don't shoot the messenger, this is just a pledge of respect.
Would you like them to read both in at one time?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill 379-32, introduced by VA Ada, an act to add a new 89.16 and 89.17 to Chapter 89 of 9GCA relative to the duty of landlords of multifamily rental units to inform tenants of the occupancy of the unit by registered sex offenders. This bill makes it a duty of the landlord and their employees and agents to inform tenants of if any of the units in multifamily dwellings are occupied by registered sex offenders. Today's landlords are required to have their rental units inspected by DPW before they are issued and business licenses to rent that unit. The Guam Building Codes require smoke and fire alarms, lighting in staircases and hallways, railings, and non-slip common areas, danger signs for swimming pools and propane tanks. Unfortunately on Guam, a child is more likely to be harmed by a sexual predator than all these other hazards combined, that landlords are required to provide warning for notices. Bill 379 is no different from any other law that requires landlords to put warning signs in things that might harm their tenants. Although internet services are available everywhere on Guam, the prices for such services are still out of reach for many low-income families. Bill 379-32 will ensure that all families that live in multifamily dwellings will have the knowledge they need to keep their children safe. And after speaking with Senator Ada before he left, he's amendable to any type of language that needs to be added to this bill to make it a better and stronger enforceable bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I also note that there's another bill, and I know that the Realtors want to, the Realtors want to come up and just speak once on both.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill 380-32, also introduced by Senator VA Ada, Tony Ada, an act to add new 5112 and 5113 to Chapter 51 of 18GCA relative to the landlord-tenant relationship and protections for victims of domestic violence. Now what this bill does, it provides special rights in the landlord-tenant relationship for victims of domestic violence, stalking, and sexual abuse. Victims of domestic violence face numerous challenges if they are to move from victim to survivor. Among those challenges is finding a safe place to live. Bill number 380-32 provides victims of domestic violence, stalking, and sexual abuse the ability to find or secure a safe place to live. The bill provides victims with three basic rights as a tenant. These are, number one, anti-discrimination protection to stay away, to stay in a home or lease a new home. Number two, the right to change locks, and number three, the right to break a lease to escape an abuser. The bill was patented after the Washington State Landlord-Tenant Law, which has been used to create similar laws in states under the jurisdiction of the Federal Ninth Circuit Court. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we look forward to the testimony. Once again, Senator Ada did say that he's amendable to, to any type of language change that would strengthen the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Felix has signed up for both, please. Anybody stay from the court? They all left. Ms. Wesling, Ms. Perez, Ms. Delgado. Why don't we start with that, then we'll have the Attorney General Representative up by yourself. All these Realtors. Okay. Please introduce yourself and submit, I'll read your testimony here.
Speaker, and, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Vice Speaker and Chairman, and Honorable Senators, thank you very much for this opportunity to provide our testimony today. My name is Louisa Wesling, and I am the 2014 President of the Guam Association of Realtors. We come today to provide testimony on these two bills, and the Guam Association of Realtors acknowledges and understands the intent of these bills, and applaud the desire of Senator to look out for the safety of the general public. We do not support the draft as it is written, and would like to see some changes, and are comforted to know that the Senator is willing to listen to some suggestions and to amend the draft. And so I'd like to read the testimony that was drafted by our Legislative Committee of the Guam Association of Realtors, and the members of our committee are Stefan Nui, who is our Chairman, we have Jackie Perez, Jason Young, Lena Valenzuela. Did I miss anybody? Oh, and Ray Haddock, I'm sorry. So without further ado, I'd like to read our testimony. Dear Senators, the Legislative Committee of the Guam Association of Realtors was tasked to review the two bills as indicated above, Bill Number 379-32 and Bill 380-32, introduced by Senator Tony Ada. We are privileged to have the opportunity to provide official testimony by our Realtor Association regarding the subject bills. The Guam Association of Realtors finds these bills place an onerous burden on landlords who are not in control of the information source. GAR recommends the bill be revised to have probation office contact the landlord and have probation office notify residents, since the duty should be on the individuals that have the information and not on the landlords. It should perhaps also include provision to require sex offenders to present their leases to the probation office as well. Additionally, not all residents are registered by name with the landlord. A unit may be rented to a primary lessie with allowance for residency of two or three persons, including dependents who may or may not be registered on the lease. There is difficulty, if not an impossibility, in requiring landlords to obtain all names of persons residing in the residences at all times. Furthermore, it is difficult for the landlord to be able to track the legal status of all tenants and/or tenant-authorized residents at all times as they may change. This bill would burden a landlord with monitoring the legal status of all the residents in his building on an ongoing basis. The bill defines multifamily dwellings as, quote, "housing where multiple separate housing units for residential inhabitants are contained within one building," unquote. Unless otherwise specified, this bill could then also pertain to individual lessors of units in condominium buildings where individual owners lease to tenants but do not have the names of other tenanted units or owners, as they are not under their control or supervision. It would be impossible for those landlords to provide information on sexual offender status of other tenants or residents in those buildings, subjecting them to the hundred-dollar fines. Other concerns include, number one, lack of clarity as to when a landlord must determine if his occupants are sex offenders. The bill requires a 24-hour notice upon discovery. However, it does not indicate the window for landlords to perform discovery. Number two, lack of clarity as to requirement of landlords to discover and, quote, "obtain background information on existing and prospective tenants for compliance," unquote, with regards to sex offender status. The bill indicates this must be done by the landlord periodically, which is very nonspecific. By means of periodic, is it daily, weekly, monthly, or yearly? Lack of clear instructions will make this provision selectively enforceable. Three, notification requirement of 24 hours of determination of an inhabitant's sex offender status is very short and does not account for weekends, holidays, or other calendar dates, which poses difficulties to meet this requirement. Would you like me to continue on our testimony for Bill 380? Okay, thank you. Our concerns with Bill 380 relative to the landlord-tenant relationship and protection for victims of domestic violence. Other concerns include, one, Section 1B indicates a victim of domestic violence may terminate the rental and agreement and quit the premises without further obligation under the rental agreement. It is not clear if that indicates no further obligation on security deposits, damage to the unit, or other issues covered under the rental agreement subsequent to the move-out date. Number two, unless otherwise provided in statute, it is unclear on who constitutes a, quote, "qualified third party," unquote, which validates the domestic violence victim status. And number three, upon reading the premises for early lease termination protection, it is based upon a report to a, quote, "qualified third party," unquote, of the individual being a victim of domestic violence rather than a crime of domestic violence, which has been determined by a court and/or judge. As much is written, a tenant could early terminate without consequence, as long as they reported a crime of domestic violence to themselves, whether that crime was proven or not. As written, there may be a potential for abuse of this statute for early termination within proven cause. In closing, we appreciate the intent of the bills. However, request for your consideration to rewrite certain sections of the subject bills for clarity and effective enforcement. Yours truly in behalf of the Guam Association of Realtors, Louisa Westling.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Felix.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Senators. I'm Chris Felix. You have my written testimony on Bill 379-32. And I listed just a few problems I saw in reading. And it's only a two-page bill. But I think the bottom line is, what do I do if I find out I have a sex offender in one of my buildings, and I tell all the tenants, and they all want to break their lease? I mean, there's no solution to that problem. I think a real simple solution is, if a sex offender applies to live in a building, he should be obligated by this law, he should notify the landlord that he is a sex offender. And I would also ask that in that bill that you, the senators, put in there, make it very clear that I have a right to reject that lease because of the laws of the fair housing. I've read it and read it and tried to figure out, do I have to take a sex offender registered or not? And I don't know. And it's a legal issue. But if you make it part of the law, I think it'll simplify and allow me to protect the tenants, which is the intent of the law. Rather than make it a landlord and a hundred-dollar-per-unit fine, it just kind of doesn't solve the problem. I think, let the registered sex offender put the obligation on him to protect the rest of us. That would be my solution. And I have other problems, but you can read them. The other one, 380-32, I also had a problem with the definition of a qualified third party. Is it my buddy? You know, write it up for me. He's qualified. So I think that needs to be defined somewhat. Overall, I have no objection to this bill and the intent. I think it's a great, get the person out of harm as fast as we can. As a landlord, I wouldn't mind breaking the lease of a tenant. There is such, there's a weird thing about, she can, the tenant can cancel, I'm sorry for using she, that's terrible. The tenant can cancel the lease and stop paying rent for a period following the last day of the month of the quitting date. You know, if it's the first, then it's 30 days. If it's the 15th, it's 15 days. If it's the 25th, it's five. I would suggest that the Senator think of just putting in a specific period, 15, 20. Normally, it's month-to-month, 30-day notice should be given. It'll probably take somebody 20 to 30 days to find a place and move in anyway. But I wouldn't keep it as open as the end of the month. It just doesn't seem to fit. And then the last thing on Section 4B, it got very confusing. This is when the tenant has the right to change the locks if the tenant believes it is the landlord that is, or the landlord's employees. And it says that after the tenant provides notice to the landlord that the tenant has changed or added locks, the tenant's rental agreement shall terminate on the 19th day after providing notice. I have no problem with that. But then it goes on to say, within 60 days of providing notice, the tenant has changed, the tenant notifies the landlord in writing that the tenant does not wish to terminate. So it's like the deal terminates in 19 days, but the tenant's got 60 days to let me know he's going to stay there. That doesn't seem to make sense. I just think it's an adjustment of numbers, or flip the numbers or something. But other than that, I really had no problem with the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Ms. Perez, did you have additional testimony?
Basically, you know, as the bill is written, there are so many issues with it that doesn't really address the problems. But the intent of the bill is good as it is. I suggest that the Senator get with the Guam Association of Realtors representatives and perhaps help him with rewriting the bill to make it amenable to both parties. We understand the, excuse me, we understand the issues with domestic violence, and we're very supportive of, you know, the ladies and the men who become abused in those relationships. So, but really, everybody needs to be protected all the way around. And there's been some abuse from, you know, different types of cases. So we just want to make sure that all the landlords are protected as well.
Thank you. Did you wish to have anything additional?
Yeah, just really quickly. My name is Claire Delgado. I'm the immediate past President for the Guam Association of Realtors and also the Government Affairs Director. Just writing on Ms. Louisa's testimony, one of the things that I was concerned with was, you know, we also manage homeowners' associations. We're not sure how this would affect them. There's no specification about, you know, homeowners' association. And also, we're discussing too, if there's a landlord that does not have any internet access, that, you know, she's elderly, she's, you know, managing maybe a duplex or fourplex or something that has no capability of, you know, accessing the registry, then this might be very, this might put a lot of liability on her as a landlord. So, yeah, unnecessarily. So, again, you know, just real short and simple, it's, you know, while I appreciate the intent and the, you know, the idea of the bill in its current form, I think it needs amendment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
My name's Jason Young. I was one of the members of the Guard Legislative Committee. So I was one of the guys responsible for coming up with Louisa's list. But I noticed one thing this morning that we forgot to leave off of that, and that was the mandatory clause that's in the bill for all lease agreements. At the very bottom, it says that this section shall be effective upon enactment. And I'd like to recommend that we put a hard start date on that. Instead, something like January 1st, 2015. Because if it starts upon enactment, we'll have, our leases, we won't be able to update them in time. We would have to individually go to every single one of our members and say, from now on, you have to include this clause. We have the ability to do that. Getting our members to actually do it is another story. But aside from the Realtors, there's other people that rent their own units, take care of properties themselves, and they may not be notified of this. So I would just worry that if we sign this into law, that we would be generating a large amount of leases that are illegal and violate the law by not having this clause. So instead of the enactment date, having a date in the future would be a better service. That way, we can do education.
Thank you very much. And I want to assure all of you that this will not be going out very soon. What I will do is, Maine Scrivener is in the room and has heard the testimony. We will schedule a roundtable where we will invite all of you to then come back. And we'll go line by line, whatever needs to be taken out and done, we'll address. All right? And, but I assure you, it isn't going out. Senator wanted a hearing. He's had the hearing. He's now heard the objections. And I think his staff has heard the objections. And we will have to have a roundtable in order for this to be cleaned up before it can be released. All right? So just to assure all of you that it's, some people have some questions.
I guess in the interim, while we're waiting for the roundtable discussion, I hope that you'll take back and be thinking about, you know, the, we're talking basically about apartment buildings where dwellings share common walls. But I don't see why, I mean, if, given the intent here, why we couldn't apply it to like a planned unit development such as Paradise Estates, which, sure, the houses are, but they're governed by homeowners' associations. So, you know, we need to think about that because it could very well come up on the floor. And we're going to need to know how to deal with that.
Anybody else? If not, Ms. Westling.
Thank you again, Senators. And certainly, we welcome the opportunity for a roundtable discussion. And we would be more than happy to share our experience and expertise in this area. Thank you very much.
And so we'll contact you through the GAR. And we'll schedule this at some point soon. Okay? Thank you. Ms. Hinkle?
Good evening, Vice Speaker and speakers. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to go ahead and speak on behalf of the Office of the Attorney General. My name is Carol Hinkle Sanchez. I'm the Deputy Attorney General for Family Division. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of both bills. Just as the Realtors testified too, we also support the actual intent of both legislations. We believe that anything that furthers the protection of the community and just creating a safer environment for the community is always going to be a plus. I'm going to speak on behalf, I know some concerns were raised, and I hope after some of my testimony, some of those concerns may be a little bit at ease or eliminated because there are some things that could be addressed through the courts. And I know that they were here earlier, but they did have to leave. And so I'm going to speak first on Bill 379, which deals with the duty of the landlords with respect to the sex offender registry. With respect to this bill, you know, we've done a lot of revisions on the sex offender registry. Federal mandates, they create the baseline. And of course, you know, our local government can always raise whatever the ceiling is. And this actual legislation provides enhanced protection to the victims with, so that they can be notified. That's what the system's about, is notification. And that's all this bill is, is to provide that enhanced notification they mentioned about landlords not having access to computers. Well, a lot of tenants don't have access either. And so these are people that are going to be in your building. And you, as landlord, would want to ensure their safety too. The legislation's very limited. It's for only those with multi-dwelling units. So it's very limited in scope as to which landlords would be required to provide this notification. So that's one of the other things. Basically, I also was able to, when this issue came up, I spoke with Senator Ada's office. And I raised this question to the policy advisor at the Smart Office in DC. And their only concerns was to ensure that we included a clause of immunity for landlords that do provide this notification to tenants, just so that they're not later on, it's not turned around, and they're not being sued civilly or criminally for releasing what is public information anyways. It's found on, it's found on our Guam Sex Offender Registry. You just go onto that website, and every name is listed there. It's listed by address. It's listed by village. So it's not hard to access. And it's public record, it's public information that's on. And so she just said to include a clause of immunity, which I did speak with Senator Ada's office about including, just so that we can ensure that landlords are not being, going to be sued civilly or criminally for posting this type of information. Also, that this information is not to be used to harass the offender and discriminate in any ways. He brought up about the fair housing laws. There are federal laws that protect people when it comes to housing and their rights. And so we want to ensure that this information is strictly just notification. It's just to provide notice to the people that are renting. The other issue that was brought up is, I know I heard one of them speak about it, is, you know, about the access. How are they going to, you know, what is their obligation? How would they get this thing? If you actually look at our Sex Offender Registry under Section 89.11, which is the notification, the judiciary of Guam manages the Sex Offender Registry. Part of their duties under that Sex Offender Registry is to provide a mechanism for visitors. And when they say visitors, you would think that's everyone in the public. To be able to call them and say, hey, I want you to provide me a listing of changes made to the registry and updates. So what they can do is probably coordinate with the judiciary of Guam Sex Offender Management Team to have a mechanism so that they can transmit a listing of people within their village or within their area of sex offenders, if there are any. And it could be updated through the, it'll be updated and sent to them every time. So that mechanism is in place. It's under the Sex Offender Registry law already. It's under the Sex Offender Registry law already. So landlords can actually just contact the Sex Offender Registry Office and request that they be added into that notification system. So that would kind of eliminate the need to always go online and keep on following up whether there's updates or not. And hopefully, once they get that first list, as soon as they start screening, I assume when you put somebody in your unit, you go through an application process and screening process, and they are supposed to actually disclose. They actually have to disclose to the Sex Offender Registry team that I live in this location. And, you know, from that point on, they can get, they'll be automatically given that disclosure as well. So apartment complex, or people who have a lot of apartment complexes or units that fall under this, can simply contact the judiciary and get their name on that email listing. That's basically for that bill. And for Bill 380, again, we also support the intent. You know, we believe, again, protection of the community is always a priority. Ensuring what we can do, the simple measures that we can take to that extra step to take to ensure their protection is always important. We do believe there may be a need to add some things and some revisions. We're willing, our office is willing to work with Senator Ada's office as well as the Realtor on making whatever amendments are necessary. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you very much. And as I said, we're scheduling a roundtable. And before that time, if your office could provide some guidance, if not an opinion, addressing Mr. Felix's concern about whether or not you can refuse to rent to a known sex offender. I mean, if there are 100 units in some of these new developments that are going up, and you're going to, so, before we have the roundtable...
Sure. Is he able to email one of, somebody, email our office the inquiry so that I can submit it to, the Civil Division would be the one that would be analyzing that.
I'll be doing it myself.
You can send it to me, Vice Speaker. And then what I'll do is I'll work with Civil on...
Because I really do think before we get, when we get around to that meeting, I want to be able to assure the Realtors that they can or they cannot. I'm not going to be giving advice from here, but I want us to be able to answer that question for them because otherwise, as he put it, we may have one tenant and the 99 units will vacate.
I mean, and the thing is though, the tenants too are going to be bound by their contract as well. So I just don't see, I think they're two separate legislations. The sex offender legislation does not say tenants can request for, you know, I think it only applies to domestic and family violence victims.
No, but the other tenants in the building will want out of their lease because...
I don't think you'll give them exceptions, though, to the penalties of, you know, breaching their lease early on, so...
Okay, well, I mean, it's just something that needs to be...
It is something we should look at, though. But I just think that, you know, the tenants will be subjected to the same lease agreements that they are. It's not going to give them an exception to get early out. I think that's only applying to the family violence victims. And I think there's, the rationale behind that is, you know, when perpetrators end up looking for victims coming back and, you know, to ensure, help them ensure their safety, you have to allow them to...
But how about the protection of the sex offender victims within a building?
You know, this law, like I said, I'm just speaking on behalf of the black and white of this provision, and it's just domestic violence victims.
No, no, no. 379 on the sex offender.
379 doesn't allow them to break the lease?
No, I'm not, I realize that, that there's no provision in there.
Correct.
But the thing is, is that how do we provide protection for one of these new villas that just opened up with 100 units in it? And you have a sex offender, a known level-one sex offender?
Yeah.
So...
We can look into that.
I'll be sending you a very detailed letter about that one because I really do think we're going to need to provide some advice to the Realtors on that very important question.
Yes, that's fine. I'll be looking forward to the email.
Anybody have any questions? If not, thank you very much, and I thank the General for us.
I will, thank you. I still want one more bill.
We have one more. On Bill 388, introduced by Senator Brant McCready, and we'll allow him to make an opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the individuals who have showed up here today. Mayor Blos, Vice Mayor Batista, Mr. Sisweko from the Basketball Community, Mr. Pelkey from the Basketball Community, and Mr. Thompson from Guam Basketball Confederation. Well, it was a good afternoon earlier, but good evening, Mr. Chairman, and thank you once again. Bill 388 was introduced for one good reason, was to provide a mechanism for us to refurbish the Tezen Gym back to its glory days, for not just the residents of Baragata, but the entire community of Guam. Bill 388 authorizes a responsible tax credit program for contributors to rehabilitate and expand the Tezen Gymnasium over a 10-year period. Now, after working with the Basketball Confederation and G.I.T.A., we have strict assurances that this bill will not violate any bond covenants. These tax credits, coupled with the efforts of the Guam Basketball Confederation, have the potential to not only repair the Tezen Gym, but to also expand the facilities with outdoor courts, parking lots, and other facilities. Also, it can be the first step towards the development of even more sports facilities in Tezen. Now, the Guam Basketball Confederation, who is here today, currently has a memorandum of understanding with DPR to run the Tezen Gym. They have assured us of their commitment to develop and grow this facility, not only for the national basketball program, but also for the entire community. It is shameful that our government of Guam allowed this Tezen Gym to fall into despair. However, through strong community partnerships with the Guam Basketball Confederation and local businesses, we can bring this facility back to life. If you remember, just a couple months ago, both our basketball teams in the off-island games won gold medals, men's and women's. The revitalization of this Tezen Gym will also serve the municipality of Baragata, which currently has no gymnasium. It is the goal of Bill 388 to rehabilitate and expand the crucial facility and a key location in central Guam. If this model is successful, which I do believe it will be, we could apply this type of tax credit program for the renovation and construction of gyms around the island, most specifically to rehabilitate gyms in Aggett, Yumatic, Moleso, Marizo, Interrohan, and all gyms and villages on the south. We have seen the immense success of this Guam Football Association has had with the Harmon Soccer Field, a success that would not have been possible without the cooperation of DPR and the issuance of tax credits. We hope Bill 388 does do the same for Tezen Gym and Guam basketball in general. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I look forward to the testimony from our constituents.
Thank you very much. I have Director Blos, Mayor Blos, Vice Mayor Batista, Coach Thompson. We have one more seat. Brent Tipton? Brent? Nope. E.J.? Please. I think there's only one other person that said they wanted to speak, and that was Mr. Pelkey. Why don't you slide up a chair over on this end, and we'll just... If you don't mind, Mr. Director, if I could start with the mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, Senators, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here this evening in support of this Bill 38-32 L.S. First off, Honorable Benjamin J.F. Cruz, Chairman, Committee of the Appropriations, Public Deb, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land in Minat, Ch'ntai Dos, and Listurang Guahan, H'gatny Guam. Bill number 388-32 L.S., an act to add a new Article 6 to Chapter 77, Division 2, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated Relative, to act authorizing the issuance of tax credits for contributors to the renovation and expansion of the Tezen Gymnasium. Dear Senators, good evening. Buenas and salud para hago dan todo in members ilisturang guahan. Sizus Masi, thank you for scheduling this much-needed public hearing so that we can present our position statement on Bill number 388-32. Favorable passage and eventual enactment of this legislation serves as a step closer to ensuring that the Guam Basketball Confederation and teams from Baragata will have a permanent home. During our recent tour of the facility with the main sponsors of the legislation and the meeting with the Guam Economic Development Agency, we all agreed that it would be the best interest of the sports community if the Guam Basketball Confederation was allowed usage of the facility. For the record, then, Mayor Palikin, myself, and the members of the Municipal Planning Council pursued the acquisition of the Tezen Basketball Court then. It was first turned over to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Government of Guam. We understood that this portion of the agreement, together with those governing the Tezen Recreation Fields, was to be used in perpetuity as a sports and recreational facility, or it would automatically revert it back to the U.S. Navy. Although we never got usage of the facility, we wholeheartedly support passage Bill 388-32 and ask the Magalahin Guahan enact the same into public law. Senseramente, myself, the mayor of Baragata, June Blos, and to my left, the Vice Mayor, Jesse P. Batista. Sizus Masi.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything?
Yes.
Mr. Director.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz, Senator Tamada, Senator Rorris Bisha, Senator Tammy Kishostamo, Senator Eileen Yamasite, and author Senator McCready. Half a day, the Department of Parks and Recreation recently executed a memorandum of agreement with the Guam Basketball Confederation for the rehabilitation, renovation, and improvement of the Tezen Gymnasium. The reference bill will not only benefit the Guam Basketball Confederation in its efforts to promote health and wellness through fiscal activity, but also encourage other private partners to participate in providing and improving recreational resources for island residents and visitors alike. DPR is in full support of Bill number 388-32 and looks forward to other initiatives that will promote and encourage investment in our facilities and our island. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me directly. Thank you for the opportunity to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Director. Thank you very much, Mr. Director. Coach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Half a day to all the senators of Guam, hard-working employees of government of Guam, all supporters of Guam basketball, and most importantly, our players island-wide. The Guam Basketball Confederation was formed about 30 years ago as a nonprofit organization with a mission to grow the sport of basketball in Guam, monitor and educate young players and coaches, and organize, promote, and prepare the Guam national teams in order to represent our island in regional and international competition against other nations. It is well-known that basketball has remained one of Guam's most popular indoor beloved sports, and a priority in the design of recreation facilities in every village for generations. Playing the sport of basketball promotes health and fitness, discipline, sportsmanship, and teamwork to islands, residents, and, most importantly, our youth. A sports and fitness facility such as this can have a huge impact on the community. It has proven that when young people focus on sports, they are more energetic and serious about school. They stay away from drugs and avoid crime by occupying their extra time. Our Guam national basketball teams have been successful since the early '70s. Over the years, our island has continued to improve and make waves as one of the top programs in the Pacific, despite never having a dedicated training facility or consistent financial support. This summer, our men and women dominated the eighth Micronesian Games in Ponape, with both bringing home gold medals, including an unprecedented eighth straight for our men's national team. Our men also recorded big wins in 2013 by defeating Hong Kong, ranked number 69 in the world, at the East Asian Games in China, and bringing home bronze medal for FIBA Oceania Games in New Zealand, following the New Zealand, falling to New Zealand by only two points. Our youth teams have also had recent success with our girls' three-on-three team performing well at the World Youth Olympics in China last month, securing victories against Indonesia and Andorra, countries with millions of population. Our youth teams are currently training and fundraising for the FIBA Oceania qualifier. I must say, our first qualifier. It's going to happen in December down in Fiji. While our men and women also began to prepare for the 2015 Pacific Games next July. Our national teams continue to borrow court time at local schools and village gyms, and often have no choice but to practice late at night, outdoor, subject to elements. Guam basketball is extremely focused on reaching the new heights of excellence in competition representing Guam, and we're here to seek your help and support. Last November, Guam basketball entered into an agreement with the Department of Parks and Recreation in order to allow our organization to rehabilitate, develop, and maintain Tezen Gym for training and competition going forward, as well as open for the community use. This type of partnership has been modeled after, effectively, by public-private relationships, including the Guam Football Association, Harmon Soccer Fields, Tezen Football and Softball Fields, as well as various playgrounds and public areas adopted by the organizations for benefit and welfare of the community. This bill will immediately allow DPR and Guam basketball to move forward in major renovation plans at Tezen Gym in order to establish the facility as one of the best sports facilities for the local community. The facility was returned to the Navy, to the government of Guam, in the late '90s, when it was once thriving gym used by many of the community, many people in the community. Several typhoons devastated the facility in the early 2000s, and the government failed to restore and maintain the use for the public. So it was closed and condemned. Together, we must bring this facility back to life. First of all, infrastructure improvements are required at the facility, including electrical, plumbing, and sewer connections, in addition to lighting, flooring, bleacher, and the air for the main court. Okay? We will rehabilitate the locker rooms, meeting rooms, weight room, and other areas for training and physical therapy. In addition, our intention is to develop up to six outdoor courts at the facility, including lighting, security fencing, and other spectator areas on site. These outdoor courts will be multipurpose and also will allow for other activities such as volleyball and other court sports. They will provide community with a venue for multiple teams and hundreds of players to compete at all ages and skill levels. And this, and there is no existing facility like this currently in Micronesia, creating an opportunity for sports tourism where teams, athletes can travel to Guam for training and competition. Our Guam basketball president, which I'm currently the president, Tony Thompson, personally has over 30 years' experience in managing sports facilities. In Las Vegas, I managed a community gym. And on Guam, I was fortunate enough to work as a facility recreation supervisor at the University of Guam Fieldhouse for 12 years. And I think I have done an excellent job in maintaining and developing facilities at Father Duane's Memorial School for the past 23 years. Our Guam basketball board that directs us includes members extremely experienced in management, development, and marketing, in addition to basketball, basketball and coaching, officiating, and mentorship. We will continue to work, excuse me, we will continue to work hard to support the growth of the sport and success for our national teams. And make no mistake, it's a lot of work to do. Our vision, we intend to be one community. We want to, we want basketball to continue to be the most popular indoor sport. Our mission is to develop and promote the game and create one basketball community where we can bring people together and unite. With your support for Bill 388-32, our dream of establishing a training center for basketball in Guam will finally come true, given opportunities for growth and development of players of all ages. Thousands of young players who are frequent the Tezen Gym for workouts rather than fall victim of other non-productive activities, crimes, and crimes. This facility will be available for residents in nearby Baragata, as well as clubs from every corner of the island. It will be a place for the island to gather and share our love for basketball. It will be a place for the island to gather and share our love for basketball and sports in general. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Coach. Coach Buckey? Did you wish to add anything?
Good evening, Mr. Speaker. Sorry to keep you past your work. Good senators, I just came here as a past president of Guam Basketball to remind you that facilities dictate programs, and GFA up in Harmon and the Little League are good benchmarks as to the successes they've had, not just locally, but regionally and worldwide, by having the facilities to train. Guam basketball, every night of the week, we don't know where our teams are going to practice, because we don't have a facility to call our home. And I think it's important that the Seahawk Gym up there, NAST Gym now, used to be very popular with exciting basketball games, and I know our seventy-five gold medalists and seventy-nine Mr. Tonins, this week, has experienced some of those games up there, along with myself, who played with the university in the early years. And I think that we need to open it back up and allow our children more opportunities up there. And I just want to remind that Guam basketball is about Guam, not just Baragata, and not just basketball, but it's about all the kids who aspire to come out and play sports. And we hope that with your support, we can bring that facility back and revitalize it. And I'm very confident with the leadership of Guam basketball now, and the young people that are supporting it, that they will have the energy and enthusiasm to bring that facility back up, where it can be a pride, a proud jewel for the island of Guam. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Coach. Mr. Cowan?
Thank you, senators, for your time, and thank you to Senator McCready for helping to introduce this bill. I also want to thank the mayor and Director Blas for working with Guam basketball. I guess I should disclose, I not only have a role in the Guam Economic Development Board, but also am a former basketball player for Guam Basketball, current coach, current board member, and I feel like I have a lot at stake here, not only for the betterment of the sport, but for the community, and fulfilling a role to work with DPR and the Baragata mayor to just improve, in any way, the opportunities for young people on Guam. I'm fortunate enough, in that GIDE role, to work with projects, including the Hotmont Projects, introduced by Senator Cruz. And I must applaud Senator Cruz on the design of that bill, because in working with DPR, a lot of the opportunities to improve sports facilities on the island is coming because of that legislation, and we're able to make improvements at other sports facilities and parks and recreational areas around the island. And I just don't feel that there's any doubt that the return on investment is there for the people of Guam and for the taxpayers when it comes to improving our public facilities and giving people a place to go and enjoy their sports, become a better athlete, that hopefully someday will produce world-class athletes, as well as just a place to get in shape and stay healthy. I'm always an advocate for that, and I enjoy any opportunity to work with any organization that improves public facilities for sports. So I'm just happy to be a part of this, I guess, synergistic relationship between so many different groups coming together, and I think our legislature can unlock the door to allow us to get Tejon Gym fully operational again, and not only operational, but expanded to become what I think will be the Mecca for basketball on the island, which is a great avenue for young people to stay fit and also harness their skills. So I thank you again, and thank everyone for coming and supporting this bill, and I look forward to getting going, working. I wanted to note that our young players, absent any funding, have been getting sweaty, maybe even a little bloody, and working up at the Tejon Gym to try to do anything we can to clean up, cut the boonies back, and roll up all that trash. And we've made a lot of progress, but with your help, we can really shine up that gym. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much, Coach. The main sponsor, Will Ask, and then the others.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank you guys on the panel. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Senator Ada, Senator Munia Barnes, and my good friend over there, Senator Morrison, who, you know, I apologize that it took so long to introduce this legislation. You know, I've been fighting crime for two years. He's been doing office of technology, and we came together, and we said we need to build some infrastructure for the youth and for basketball, and we're going to move forward and do other things as well. But this is something that I think is very important to our island. It should have been done a long time ago, but the second-best time to do it is right now. My question would be, the time sensitivity of this bill, and making sure that this bill does not get lost and put on session floor, passed into law, hopefully the governor signs it into law, you guys can get started. Do you guys have a plan, ready to go, out of the box, if this bill is expedited a little quicker than we think, that could turn dirt and start renovating this infrastructure almost immediately?
Yeah, the answer is yes.
Can you give me, I mean, I know it's late, but can you give me some kind of a timeline and a navigation of how we're going to do this?
Absolutely. In the meantime, we've been, yes, it is, sorry. In the meantime, we've been reaching out to anyone in the community willing to donate services to our organization, as well as DPR, to help with the planning phase. We had some electrician, electrical inspections done. Not very good news, but at least we have a good picture of what the problem is. Apparently, several of the wooden power poles were also damaged in the typhoon that, I guess, damaged the gym. So we're going to require five or six new power poles just to be able to connect to island power, and there is a plan being developed, and of course, financing in order to finish the electrical engineering on that plan, so that we can move forward on getting power hooked up. Without power, we can't really get started. And then beyond that, we've been lining up all the proposals for whatever finishings that are going to be needed, including a new floor for the indoor gym, light fixtures, equipment for the restrooms and locker rooms, on and on. And so a lot of work has been done, and we're ready and eager, and with the approval of the bill and the tax credit, we can certainly steamroll through the development process. And I may be a little ambitious, but I commit to our young players out there that they will be playing basketball in the new year, and whether that's early in the new year or before we have to gear up and fly to the Pacific Games and represent Guam, we will get time to train in our own facility and not borrow time wherever anyone is willing to give our national team time. And not only that, we're also trying to plan for tournaments and leagues for other players to develop and be able to participate. So we're ready.
Now, I know that is a typhoon shelter for the community. We can also take advantage of some grants, and there's a million-dollar grant, I think, per gym, per village. Is that something that we will look at down the road, or something that we can use to help supplement this project and move forward with it?
I think we're open for any way to help fix the gym.
You know about that grant, right?
Yes, what we can do is look into it and work collaboratively with EJ and the Guam Basketball Confederation, yes.
That would be my suggestion, if you guys could work hand-in-hand together. You maybe take care of that million-dollar grant, subsidize it with the gym, and then we can, when we use this model, and this model becomes successful, which I am absolutely certain that, once we put our resources together, this will be. Like you said, you're overambitious, but I think ambition is great when it comes to a project like this, because if you go there, you know that it's going to take ambition and money. And so if we can work together to help supplement this project, I think not only will it satisfy the Baragata community, but we can use this as a model to just kind of move down around the island and have total infrastructure redevelopment. And in twenty years from now, we can look back and say, wow, those senators in the Thirty-second Guam Legislature really did a good job for us. And that's a legacy that I would like to leave. And so thank you guys for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank Senator McCready for allowing me to be a coach. To work through organizations such as yourself that have passion for the sport. I know the government has challenges right now for many of these facilities out there, but organizations like yourself not only help the sport, but, you know, take the sport to another level, and getting more children involved, getting more youth involved in the sport. When we, I'm glad the MOU has been put in place, and I wanted to ask this question because, you know, for example, this was a model in place that kind of went through some hurdles, but, you know, today, we have kids playing in sale because of a similar concept, and that's why the lights are on and things are working over there. But that was something we had to put in place after Typhoon Pong Sona, a similar concept, because we just didn't have the resources to get that facility up. I appreciate this, because it revives this vision of this government, working through Department of Parks and Recreation, again, the mayors, and organizations like yourself to move this forward. But I know I mentioned maintenance, upkeep, and all that, but it doesn't refer to anything of management in here of the facility. Is this built into the MOU where there is a shared management responsibility to the facility? So that way, it's maintained, or someone is managing, or is it still under complete purview of DPR?
Yes, we've talked with the basketball federation, and of course, when we do the project, of course, we have to put maintenance into it. As you know, we have to know how much would it cost for the maintenance of, you know, upkeeping the gym once it's finished.
Thank you, Director. I just want to make sure there is a management component in there, because it's important, at the end of the day, that, you know, there is a level of understanding, again, that, you know, if it's going to be maintained over the years or years to come, and again, we're not going to be here forever, but I know there is a management component built in the MOU that will allow the organization, either through some kind of fee structure or whatever, that will allow to maintain it and not burden the government too much over time, because, again, the folks that have the passion for the sport, that know how to get the kids involved, but also generate revenue, can, you know, expand the facility over time, if there's some management component in there. So, is there...
As far as management, I definitely have a lot of experience. I actually had a good boss before, and he taught me a lot. I learned a lot stateside as well. But I do agree, yes, we definitely need to be on top of things. You're talking to a person who actually goes down and scrubbed my own floors at the Phoenix Center, okay, and dig gum in, and had to make sure the bathrooms are taken care of and everything, so I do have experience in all those, in those areas. I will make sure that, especially if we have a place to call our home, that is taken care of.
So that's in the MOU, the management, okay, okay. So the Confederation is responsible for management?
Okay. I think, Senator, that was part of the, the main part of the relationship was that DPR, with their hard-working employees, are still, they have so much to do, and this was one of the facilities that they struggled to be able to maintain, and that's where the partnership really works. And I know we have some of our players also here in support, and so on behalf of them, I volunteer all of them to clean as much as needed. So they're all here nodding their head, yes.
No, again, when I was working with Senator McCready on this, I was very excited what he was doing and working with the folks, because, again, this is a model that I hope we can take to other federations for other facilities, either the Ganya Pool, or their softball fields, other facilities that will be partnered with the organizations that have, such as yourself, that have been part of basketball and all the athletes that are here. So I just wanted to make sure, because I understand, you know, over time, you know, when something gets to the level of, again, you're going to put about 2.5 million into this project, or that's what it's kind of showing here, I'm sure there's going to have to be some level of great expertise that stays for the long run to keep that facility going. But I thank you all for this partnership, and thanks Senator McCready for his efforts for making sure this partnership goes, Department of Parks and Recreation. And I also want to thank the athletes for working hard to bring back the gold medal to Guam, and I know we have Mr. Shriko here, that's one of the first gold medals way back to bring back to Guam, but congratulations, all of you. Thank you.
The bill on page four allocates up to $2.5 million in tax credits for the renovation of the facility. What was the basis for that figure?
The basis between working with DPR and Guam Basketball and talking to several professionals out there was basically an estimate brought together to be able to fully develop the facility and expand as well with outdoor courts. So it's an estimate considering the infrastructure and utilities that are currently lacking. All the, of course, all the copper wire is gone, all the infrastructure, and we hope that once we start truly developing, we're not going to find any other surprises in regards to the sewer and plumbing, but it was the best estimate, bringing together professionals who have built these type of facilities, in terms of how much it's going to take to get this done.
So assuming no surprises, for $2.5 million, the building can be made fully functional?
Yes.
Okay. Has an alternative been looked at? For example, how much did it cost to build the Phoenix Center?
The Phoenix Center costs 3.2.
3.2. For $700,000, you could probably get a functioning facility up much quicker, no surprises. And so is that an alternative that the organization would even consider?
I'm sure we would love to get a home anywhere and anyhow, but I think in analyzing how to best use the facility that was returned by the Navy to the Government of Guam and get it back running, and as well as expand it to fully maximize the sports complex concept there in Tejon, that's where the goal in mind was, to focus on this facility and do the best we can with what we have versus starting from scratch. And I think also, a facility of this size, in comparing to the Phoenix Center, a facility of this size would cost much more. It's larger, it has a large expansive weight room, and I think up to six areas where they used to have racquetball courts. It's got a lot more.
How old is the structure?
It was returned in the nineties. I'm not sure when the Navy built it.
I guess my point is, is that are we dealing with a fifty-year-old structure? You know, you said that the estimates came up between the Federation, DPR, and some professionals. I don't know whether a structural analysis was actually conducted on the building. I'm glad you said that you had an electrician come in and take a look. I don't know if you had a mechanical engineer come in to take a look at what other things need to be done. So I'm just kind of concerned that, you know, we're going to, I mean, I'm fully behind the intent of what it is that you guys are trying to accomplish. I would just hate that we put in $2.5 million and find out later that we can't play basketball because we can't put up the lights, or we can't get the floor in, because $2.5 million, it's, you know, it's, so that's my only concern with this. Otherwise, you know, insofar as the intent of the bill, I certainly am fully supportive of it, but I would be curious to find out... But I would be curious to find out, you know, really the cost of the alternative such as knocking down that old structure and building, building a new one.
Yeah, I think, I think one other thing to keep in mind, it's a solid concrete structure. Not, not reinforced steel. I think most of our village gyms are also steel, steel structures. The Phoenix Center is also a steel structure. This, this Tijin Gym, and one of the first things we looked at before, before really stepping forward with DPR, with, with construction experts, is at least that the structural integrity is still intact. And once, once we were given some indication that the building looks good in terms of, you know, holding up, it was built solid and the shell is, is solid. And that's, that was the most important thing to us. But, but that was one other thing to keep in mind. It's a fully concrete shell versus other options to build maybe semi-concrete, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Thank you all for your community leadership, for your organizational leadership. And so when everything settles and when it gets up and things start flourishing, will there be plans to start with our younger kids? So that there's basketball clinics for our toddlers and our preschoolers? Something to think about. And then also to ensure that we thread in those of us with disabilities. There's, there's, we have value and there will be a way. They're not going to be able to go and help you win the gold medals. And maybe that's a wrong statement to say, but I, I know what you're, I know your performance and I know, you know, what you, you get and what you're getting for. But if we can ensure that, again, when, when you get it all together between Department of Parks and Recreation and then the Federation, that on this, on this agenda, on the table, is that we're going to get to really beginning at the beginning. So that by the time they get to you, EJ, they're, I mean, those healthy habits are so embedded that they already know what to do and what not to do, right? And I think that'd be a really great plus. And, and then, you know, Senator Morrison says, and then we multiply this all over the place for, for everything else. But, and, and so then a part of the dream is, and again, it's another DOE issue that I've tossed out to DOE, but it hasn't been grabbed upon. And that is that the physical activity needs to, needs to start at the very beginning with our public school kids, well, all kids, but we have 30,000 kids in our public school system, right? So eventually I would like to see every kindergarten kid learn how to swim and then learn how to paddle and fish and everything that people pay to be here, that's what we should be doing with our, our kids, right? And, and learn how to play basketball. So, you know, we build the facilities and then that's where they go, right? And so I would hope that as you continue to dream, and now you're realizing your dreams, that you can say that this too will start, all of this will reach more and more of our kids and that you figure out how to do that. And the mayors know how to pull in everybody and Director Blas will know how to work with the superintendent, you know, and all of that. And I just think it's a real win. It's such a win-win to get them in place and then get the people there and to teach. And then, and then they'll be prouder of everything because it's their stuff and they're going to take care of it, right? And then maybe we'll start taking care of our parks a little bit better, right? And so that, that I think is wonderful. And I'm not asking for any answers, but I do hope that that is on the table. I do hope that it's, it becomes even a fuller picture. So it's not only our star athletes, but it's our beginning athletes and our beginning, our beginning kids. And, you know, you'll find some real gems there. They just never had the support or the modeling. They just never knew how, you know? But you'll find them. You'll find them for us. And so it's a real village issue and I just really appreciate you persistence and your determination and you're saying you're ever going to do it and, and you know, you're going to do it. So thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
One last question, just because we're on the subject and I want to get it on public record. When this becomes successful and, and, and we, we, we take that 1% unplugged revenues and we continue on a 7% growth in our economy, right? Is the Guam Basketball Confederation committed to modeling this piece of legislation and the success to other villages so we can just kind of build that infrastructure? It's something that we started and we can just continue it. With the numbers still, with the numbers still coming in and hopefully under 2.5 because Senator Ada had a very good question. That, that's a good question. If we're going to spend 2.5 million dollars, let's make sure that the, the structure is safe. But moving forward and, and we have the resource, that, that tax credit, are you guys committed to doing this model legislation in every village if we have to?
Yes, we are. We're committed to offer our expertise in all the villages, to go down and do programming and do a lot of camps and clinics for young kids. The model that around the country, in Spain, France, Italy, places like that, they have their national teams actually working camps, giving back to the young ones and having a feeder system to come up through to our national teams. With three-on-three right now, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but three-on-three may be in the next Olympics. And Guam is leading the way. Our, our girls team is leading the way in the world, ranked in the world for three-on-three. And it's something that we're just really scratching the surface. That's why we're looking at outside courts. And we're talking about bringing, as far as sports tourism, bringing more possible, you know, tournaments to the island of Guam for the young people. And they're starting off real young. Come December with our 19 and under, it's going to be a world qualifier. It's also opening up doors for the next year for 17s and 16 and under world championships. So we're, we're in a good place right now. We just need our own home. Okay? Go ahead.
Is there potential, I know you brought up the old structure, but is there potential to modernize it and use green technology today? Because, you know, the, the director knows, I mean, that, that one of the biggest costs of DPR is utilities. And I, I know over time, even for the benefit of the organization, I, I just don't want to see that utilities is causing the problems for scheduling and everything. So I just wanted to throw that out. If, even though it's an old structure, could it be modernized to, or it could be used green technology to reduce costs for there? Hopefully, just recommendation, throwing it out and if you can consider that so that way DPR can be alleviated from utility costs.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much and thank you, coaches and mayors, for your, your efforts in the community. All right? I have three pages. Did I understand the Attorney General had a statement?
We just had one on comments.
Okay. I'll excuse this.
Is it good?
I'll excuse this panel.
Okay, thank you.
And anybody else that wants to come up? I know you all marked that you supported it and you didn't mark oral, but if anybody else wants to speak, you're more than welcome to come forward.
I never say anything bad. I want you guys to know that. I'm positive, the most positive person here. Don't worry, it's on.
You don't need to sign up. Just come up and introduce yourself. Come on. Oh, you're, you're signing in. Oh. Go ahead.
So on behalf of the Attorney General's Office, again, I'm Carol Hinkle Sanchez, the deputy for Family Division. The only statement we have to make, I know that we had executed the-
Thank you very much and thank you for reminding me and to remind the general public out there, the record will remain open for the next 10 days. For any of you who wish to submit written testimony, it can be sent to senator@senatorbjcruz.com or it can be delivered to 155 Hessler Place, Hagatina 96910 or faxed to 477-2522. All right? And you sure nobody else wants to speak? No? Thank you very much and this committee stands adjourned.